Okay. We're up and running. Welcome, this is a workshop to discuss the library. And I'm just going to immediately turn this over to Jeff and Brendan. They have some opening remarks. We will then go to public comment, then come back and do a lot more of a discussion, entertain more public comment, and then move on out. It's you two.
So I think it'll be helpful to, my name's Brendan Reardon, a member of the Select Board. I think it'll be helpful to begin by reiterating the decision and vote that the Select Board made at the meeting. Can you hear me? Is it on?
I'm telling you guys something over here, those mics don't come into the room.
I think she just fixed that, though.
I can just project. Okay. I think it'll be helpful to begin by reiterating the decision and vote that the Select Board made at the beginning of the, or at the end of the meeting on January 9th. The Select Board assumed responsibility for preparing the next and what we hope will be a final and successful proposal for a new Rockport Library. Furthermore, we made it clear that we intend to prepare a single proposal, and therefore do not intend to incorporate the element of choice that many members of the public requested. Lastly, we express the goal of presenting a proposal to the public on the June ballot. The purpose of tonight's proceedings is to present a framework for the Board to follow as we prepare the next library proposal. Tonight's meeting will include two opportunities for public comment, as well as a discussion in front of the public between members of the Board. We're going to begin with public comment. For those of you who disagree with our decision to assume responsibility for preparing the next proposal, or for deciding not to advance multiple proposals to choose from, this is your opportunity to express your disapproval or support. Following public comment, we will make our presentation outlining what we believe is a responsible, transparent, and reasonably efficient path to a new library proposal. Following our presentation, the public will have a second opportunity to comment. This time, we will ask you to restrict your comments to the presentation itself. Please be specific and brief. With that in mind, we open up the floor to anyone who would like to comment on our January 9th decision, and to prepare the next proposal ourselves.
And I'm Luther, the management. Brendan mentioned that by design, last week, we, the Select Board, said we would present one final program. We will endeavor, and all the process is designed to have as, to consider as many of both sites as we can, particularly the new questions or the persistent questions that keep coming up. So because, you know, just because we say we're going to end up with one doesn't mean we're not going to look at two, we're going to look at two as fairly as possible. And for the people coming up to talk, if there's, it's all questions and positive stuff, you get a chocolate. If you get into pissing and moaning, no chocolate.
Let's watch the language, please.
If you get into moaning, no chocolate.
Thank you. I don't know if that was much better.
Would anyone like to start with public comment, or would you like us to just proceed with the proposal?
There's chocolate.
Hi, I'm Lynn Johnson, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I thank you for serving on the Select Board. I know it's not an easy job. I would like to just share that since this whole discussion has started, I have spent a lot of time thinking about this. And I shared with Brendan and with Jeff when I had an opportunity to talk with them, but I wanted to share this with you other three, that I've really spent some time driving by the town office and thinking about this town. I grew up here, I care about Rockport. The town office, to me, is so representative of our town. It shows our past, our future. It shows that we cared enough to really make a difficult decision by buying land and moving there. When you drive by, it looks so appropriate. It looks like a town office. It looks welcoming. It makes our town look good. It makes people coming to town feel like they know where to go. It's visible. It's got wonderful parking. If I had a stroller with me, or if I were on a walker, no matter what my situation, I would feel like I can, I can go there comfortably. I would urge you, as you look forward, to think about the people who have held your seats in the past, who had the courage to make very difficult decisions. They weren't always popular. I think we know people who made unpopular decisions, and it cost them some of their friendships in the community, but they looked ahead, and they knew what was important, and that's what's Rockport, and that was Rockport's future. What's best for all the citizens of Rockport. Not the emotion, and not the history, but thinking about what's best for us, in 25 years, for our citizens. I think about the current site, and being from a family of real estate appraisers, I think about the appropriateness of the use of the land, the size of the lot, all those things that are so important to making a commitment, to making a long-term commitment as a, for municipal building in our community. And for those of you who know, our family sold a home recently. We also know what happens when a site's overdeveloped, and what that looks like for the neighborhood and for the community. It makes a huge statement that we all have to live with. So again, I thank you for your service, and I urge you to think about the town office, and drive by and really take a look at it, and see what it means for our town, for the past and for the future. Thank you.
Yeah, you forgot the chocolate. Does anybody else want to make a comment at this point? Then we're back to you. Oh, I see how you broke these out now. That's good. That's good.
Jeff, I'm going to ask you to just interrupt me as you want to.
Yes.
A considerable amount of work. A considerable amount of work has already been completed at the request of the Select Board and on behalf of the citizens of Rockport, by the Steering Committee, the Library Committee, the Ad Hoc Library Planning Committee, the Head Librarian, the Capitol Committee, and others. The work was done in good faith, and the majority of it is both recent and valid. This work should be the starting point for our deliberations moving forward. But the proposal that resulted did not receive the necessary voter support, so we have to make some changes. Our job now is to identify where, and how, and why we intend to deviate from those recommendations and conclusions. I'd like for us to think about the project budget as having three separate parts, and set our targets for each early on in our discussions. The public burden is a not-to-exceed dollar value to be borrowed in the form of a bond where our citizens shoulder the burden through a voluntary increase of their taxes. The private commitment trigger, these are funds to be raised by a Capitol Committee through private contributions. The project will proceed when and if the ballot initiative passes and the Capitol Committee has received commitments of this amount. But our goal is to achieve a library that will exceed the community's bare minimum requirements for many years to come. The aspirational funding follows the example of other successful community infrastructure projects where people have given generously. The example of the Stroud Auditorium comes to mind. Our proposal should highlight desired enhancements that will be incorporated if the Capitol Committee is able to secure additional contributions to pay for them. These could be things like solar panels, superior efficiency windows, higher-quality build materials, or better furniture and furnishings.
So not only, the other examples in the community include, for instance, the picker room, but by design, we've already seen a good design by, from Reed, where there is an area that is designed to be built out for future stuff. We could, if we feel the need, for, from a pricing standpoint and a passability standpoint, if we feel the need to start with a smaller library, that it then allows somebody or a group of people to say, you know what, we really like the idea of this single aspect of the library, and they could, independent of the other fundraising ventures, they could raise money for that sort of thing. So if that's not clear, ask us during the, during the Q and A afterwards.
I wanted to finish that thought by saying Jeff and I are inclined to leave those sorts of decisions to the architect, the Head Librarian, the Library Committee, the Capitol Committee, and the donors. Our job is to set things in motion in a way that encourages and fosters generosity. Budget and likelihood of passage should serve as a kind of filter. For our decisions to be considered valid, each of us should be able to say that I believe the decision works within our budget targets, and I believe a strong majority of voters will support a proposal that incorporates this decision. With the exception of the most recent ballot question, the library votes from the last few years are either compromised or inconclusive. The Select Board shares responsibility for that. We voted down a less-than-thoroughly-prepared proposal on the RES at the same time we voted no on whether to build a new library at all. We changed the zoning to allow for a new library at the Lime Rock site, but voted down a ballot question that would have ensured the new library was built on that site. But the most recent proposal was different. There are things we can and should learn from that vote. Our publicity effort may have been insufficient, but an appropriate level of time and consideration was spent examining the issues and preparing the proposal. A very large portion of our eligible voters cast a ballot. The public had ample opportunity to voice their support or disapproval, and we heard from one another on every attribute and every reason to vote for or against. And more, most importantly, the vote was very close. Some of the detractors of the most recent proposal cited discrete flaws and drawbacks: too expensive, too big, not enough curb appeal, inadequate parking and accessibility. These are all things that can be fixed. Site selection is less readily addressed. Some people voted no because they don't feel an honest head-to-head comparison of the attributes of the two sites has ever occurred. We have to have an honest conversation about the amount of time and financial commitment that it would take to achieve a head-to-head comparison of both sites on equal footing. And then we have to decide whether we're willing to follow through and commit those resources. And finally, both sites guarantee that a certain number of no votes. We should just ignore this problem because it cannot be fixed.
That is to say, people in the town that just do not want a library?
Remember that we don't need to count or know the number of people who will change their vote from no to yes. We just need to prepare a new proposal that gives people plenty of reason to do so. There's a lot to cover. We need to be efficient with our time. That means no more verbal exchanges with citizens during our meetings. The public has had ample opportunity to be heard. Written letters to the Chair are always welcome. As ever, letters to the editor will provide an outlet for those with a need to express themselves to the broader audience.
During, and we'll flesh out this concept a little bit more, but during the meetings where we would have experts that we are asking questions of, just so we get up to speed and we feel as though we've made the best decision, we will entertain questions from the audience on three-and-a-half-by-five cards. But we really need to keep things flowing as much as possible.
If the Board wishes to consult with advisors or ask questions of experts to help us make decisions, we need to select individuals who have applicable expertise and do not have a demonstrable bias. The Steering Committee report and the recommendations of the Ad Hoc Library Planning Committee identify most of the items that require our attention. We may need to add a few things that have come to light more recently. This is one possible sequence that seems to make some sense, but don't overanalyze it. The point is that the five of us would work together to arrive at a decision-making sequence we can all agree on. Our decisions and conclusions have to square with the budget, and we have to believe they will pass before we can move on. If not, we go back and we rework. By the time we make it through our list, most of the questions will be answered and a major, and the major proposal attributes will be set. We would engage the architect and someone for detailed cost estimates. For those who are curious, I'd heard a rumor that Dick Reed was retiring. In fact, he is not. Reed and Company remains interested in the project if we are interested to work with them. Of course, we could always solicit proposals from more than one architect. And with that, you have something to say?
Well, Jeff can start, yes. I want to go back to the very beginning in that one of the things this Board recognizes, and I'll say it right out loud, and I'll say it out loud twice, is that there is a large group of our own citizens, our neighbors, who do not trust the Select Board right now. And we got ourselves there for whatever, however, missteps, missteps of ourselves personally and on the Board, and missteps of other operations that in the end reflect on us, we recognize this. And as important as anything, we want our actions, and we want our neighbors' actions, to come back to the Rockport that we know, to come back to respect and tolerance and open-mindedness, and a feeling of inclusion. And that's, we want to include as many people in the, let us call it, quiet dialogue of this next step. And this is ambitious, and this might be a touch naïve, but it, the town deserves it, the town deserves the Select Board to drop down a gear and put the mud tires on and get going, just as hard as they can. So with that information, we invite anybody up here to either ask questions or to comment on what you understand our process to be.
I should have just also said that three members, we did not circulate this beforehand. So three members of the Select Board and the Town Manager saw this for the first time at the same time that you did. So if you'd prefer, I mean, Jeff and I can, you know, you can, you can ask questions of the two of us, poke holes in the process, we can, we can stand there and be eviscerated. Or you can listen to a discussion from the Board, and they can poke holes in the process, and that way you'll have more ammunition when it's your time.
After this part, and then there's no reason that if it's, if you don't have enough to ask questions right now, we're going to start after this to get an understanding, a clear understanding on the Board as to what Brendan and I think we want to do, and then we're going to start in a workshop fashion, we're going to start to deal with subjects, with questions that we've gotten, that we've written down from all these different meetings that we've had, and subsequent meetings. And we're going to start to see what the next couple of meetings look like. So that will give you an idea of our process and what we've taken note of. And something that's very, very fair, and we wanted, is that if you have, it's not quite like Jeopardy!, but if you pose something in a question, it comes off as being much more open-minded. Say, you know, wouldn't you think that it's cheaper to build at, on the flat side of RES? We happen to have that question five times, so it's well-represented. But if there are questions there that we haven't thought about, or that are persistent, even though they may have been answered from the Steering Committee, those are important things that we want to know are on your mind. So I yield the mighty bag of chocolate.
Does anyone want to comment at this time? All right.
I assume we're going to have a discussion.
That's the idea.
On the Board, and do we want to do public comment after that discussion?
Yeah, it sounds like people would prefer to hear from us, and then if, have an opportunity to respond to that. As I said, you guys haven't seen this until just now. Ah, sorry, this is an even shorter version of that. I think this is probably the most helpful thing to have up, but.
Okay. So what is, what are you proposing we do to move forward from right at this particular point with this document in front of us?
Well, I'd love to hear people's feedback to this concept.
Okay. I could just share some of the notes if we're just trying to start a conversation. Just some of the things. One, I picked up on, you would use the term, as long as they don't have demonstrable bias. And just trying to be a literary person, so like, is decent bias okay, as long as it doesn't cross the threshold of demonstrable?
So I, I mean, we should, we should hammer this out. To me, my litmus test for this is that if somebody walks in the room, and people in the room know what that person's going to say before they open their mouth, that's bias. Demonstrable, perhaps that wasn't an especially useful adjective.
The bias that we really want to get away with is advocating for one side or another. I think that, you know, for instance, I believe we want to, we want to talk to one, two, or three urban planners, which, because one of the big aspects of the Board, one of the, one of the good aspects of the Board stepping up and saying, you know, we really do have to take responsibility for this, is that we're also the people with the vision, who are supposed to have the vision, and are supposed to make long-term plans for the town. And with something like, what do we do with RES, what do we do with the in-town site, those are both very, very key. I mean, everybody knows the key, we just don't, we maybe aren't, at this point, are not sure key for what. So if we had Richard Remsen in here, if we had Jane LaFleur, or if we had, you know, those two, I think, have no perceived bias and would be acceptable. If we had Maisie Cox or Brinkley, that might get a little bit tenuous because they've already said, in their professional opinions, they feel that it should be there. But there may be some instances where we, where we have somebody, you know, in five chairs in front of us, and we say, take a breath and just listen to what they have to say, because it's not coming from a personal, I'm not personally advocating for this, this is my professional opinion. So that's what we're trying to do. And there have been people we've asked that have, that have actually said, thank you very much, but I think, I think I'll be perceived as someone with bias, and therefore I won't be on your list. And I do have, and I can bring up on the screen, I do have a list of people that we have asked, and we can discuss that at some point tonight. And I only want to speak about the people that we've asked and have accepted. Except, I already blew it.
I mean, we, you know, I don't know if you have a sense for what sorts of skillsets you might need to hear from, but it seems logical, if we want to get into that, to start with that, rather than start with who you want to hear from.
No, and I, and I get it, it's kind of a catch-22. The folks that you know well, and that could, you know, potentially be convinced of, you know, doing some pro bono work, are folks that are well-known in town.
Yeah.
And could have that bias. Or you come up with the money, and you hire outside folks that have no bias at all, so walking that fine line is difficult but doable.
So just to explain, and I didn't, I only did 10 copies of this seven-page matrix, but this is about 190 questions or points that people had made, and it's then broken up into what you saw. And can you go to the last, I think our last slide, yeah, gives sort of the overview of that. It does belong to budget passibility. Yeah, this isn't really good, but we have, we have these subjects so that all questions about accessibility are in one thing, and all questions about citizens' relations are in another thing. That allows us, among other things, to, tonight, to take a guess and say, we might be able to talk about, you know, well, programming size might take a whole meeting. You know, it's very well documented, but there's new pressure. That's a back and forth, and that's a back and forth with, you know, architects that can tell us in general, you know, we're looking at big, general things. But we could have a single meeting that went over site, site options, what we call site-specific size questions, site work cost, site interruption. All those could be in one meeting, and would have, you know, two engineers and two architects and somebody who was kind of an overseer of big projects. And those people would be able to ask us, answer the questions that a lot of opinions are based on. You know, is it cheaper to build at RES? Is it, you know, conceivably cheaper to build in-town? Don't think so, but let's find out, you know? So it's those kind of experts that we'll be talking to, and it's, and this document that we're going to hash out over the next 25 minutes is, are the lists as sorted by the kind of question they are.
I want to go back to your 25,000-foot slide, the one with the final filter on it, because I want to, I think something else needs to be in there.
Okay.
And that is, what is in the best interest of the town? Because if you look at, if you answer these two questions, I mean, you could put something in there and say, well, we can rise, raise privately $500,000 and build a little building, and that probably would pass because nobody's taxes would go up, but is it in the best interest of the town to do that? So I think you can get yes answers to both of those questions in your final filter, and not necessarily have something that's in the best interest of the town. That's what I think this Board is charged with doing, is what is, we need to put forth a proposal that we believe is in the best interest of the town moving forward, and some of that is to what Lynn spoke to, I think. And it doesn't necessarily mean, okay, let's, let's design a 16,000-square-foot library or something like that, but let's realistically think about what we want the library to be. So I think that has to be part of the final filter, too, in my opinion.
Can I kind of piggyback on that? Best interests of the town, we have our individual opinions. Soliciting public input is sometimes hit or miss. Sometimes you hear the same things over and over again. Sometimes you come across really good gems that things grow out of quite well. You had mentioned in your presentation a somewhat limiting of public input. You did expand on that, that it was primarily just going to be at times when we're interfacing or interacting with architects. But, you know, it seemed to be something that the Board wanted to do, especially, I felt Jeff engaged with the community. Have we, have we gone past a point where we feel that robust engagement with the community could be more detrimental than not? Or are we, I'm just curious, how much input, you know, where's, where's the citizen say? When we, when we get a little, pretty little picture, is that an appropriate time to say, all right, what do you think of our pretty little picture? But, you know, not when we're talking with the architects, just so they don't feel like it's a closed loop and we're only talking to ourselves?
So absolutely, any of the meetings where we're talking about this stuff, I would love to see 75 people. Absolutely. And I would love for people to say, hey, it's important to answer this question, and pass that in. What I don't want is for, is for an hour and a half in those meetings of people having, you know, having their feelings hurt, having, you know, getting up and saying, you must do this, this is the only way I can conceive of doing this. And, you know, that needs to take place, that needs to dissipate out a little bit. And I'm the guy who goes for information, I'm the guy who let people talk forever, and I suddenly put on my Dr. Jekyll and Mr. Hyde outfit, and said, for the purposes of these meetings, I think that's a better way to run the meetings.
And I agree. I think that the idea of having audience members able to put a question on three-by-five card and to pass it up, and for us to commit to the fact that, yes, we will look at that question and read it publicly, and so that the question gets out in the public meeting, it takes a little bit of the emotion out of what we've seen in these public meetings, which is somebody coming up and perhaps very eloquently stating their belief of one aspect or another of the project, and then getting a huge round of applause from their people in the audience, then somebody else coming up and very eloquently exposing, espousing the opposite point of view, and then they get a huge round of applause. It becomes very emotional, and I think if we can, if we can get the public to buy into the three-by-five cards, if you will, I guess it's old technology, you know, pencil and paper, but I think that that will get us the information, and if it comes in the form of questions that we can then answer, I think, I think that's a way to help move the process forward a little bit more.
They don't have to necessarily write them on three-by-five cards. We have the chat.
They could be outside as well.
The livestream, they could be passed into.
There's 11 people watching now, there's 13 people in the room, there's 11 people watching. There's one chat going, one person chatting.
With themselves?
With themselves, wants to know what's in Jeff's pocket.
Oh, it's my dinner, it's a fork.
Can't get away with anything.
Blast a cork to eat dinner. I get cranky when I don't eat.
But I, you know, I think we shouldn't underestimate the ability of, people are actually, the Select Board meetings do draw a lot of people watching.
Super quick question, do those chats get saved, or as soon as the meetings close, is it erased?
I don't know.
They're all typed in, and they all stay up there, right?
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, I don't think the future.
Because if we're talking about compiling questions, I wouldn't want to lose it. Because if we're talking about compiling questions, I wouldn't want to lose it if the meeting closed.
We can look into that, can't we?
Yeah. I, I, I don't think that they're fugitive after you closed on the session. One of the things I wanted to add on to, um, uh, the positive aspect of the five of us making this decision is that there are parts of this that, that are very technical. And God bless all the people that worked on the, you know, library committee, the steering committee, and the ad hoc committee. They waded through a lot of technical stuff. And, um, we have to get up to speed with all of that stuff. So, um, the, the advantage of that is that the, the effort is to just get five more people up to that rather than 35, although 3,500, 3,200 can, can follow along as much as, as they want. And, and again, hopefully have their own particular questions answered. But in the end, five different personalities who have five different weightings of all the issues, you know, I might not put accessibility as high as somebody else, um, but somebody else here might. And in the end, we come out with our individual decisions. And I got to say, in the end, I would love for there to be either verbalization prior to a vote of, "This is why I'm voting this way," or, uh, or something written that somebody could look at as a matrix. And we could have, you know, 10 subjects and each of us can end saying, "I was very affected by this." And, and another person said, "It, it doesn't seem to me to be as important." So, and, and all part of that transparency, which is so desperately needed and appropriate for this process.
I had one final note. Well, I was just, I was writing some things down. This that's up here on the board. You all, you wanted to do this in a systematic fashion, start at one, go to two.
I recognize that there, the desire to make these things discreet is ridiculous.
One plays off the other.
The, the, the exercise that I find useful is that if we don't believe what we are working toward will pass, we have to go back. If we don't believe what we are working towards can be squared with the budget, we have to go back. We can jump around. Basically, anything like this needs to be listed. And this, I don't want people to spend too much time on. This is, I, I didn't spend that much time on this. I tried to, you know, you know, it would look something like this. The purpose is that I believe these people can figure out something like this and a sequence to go through.
Oh, no, I love, I think this is great and it would keep us on track. It's just, you know, uh, future-proofing and expansion potential, just for me, that would kind of go up into the, you know, the overall cost, you know?
Absolutely.
It was only, I was just curious, did you feel like this was a hard and fast model or was there tweaking?
There are certainly, for, for purposes of, of investigatory meetings, some of these are natural combinations.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. And, and that's one of the things we'll talk about now or we'll do it executively.
And I want to mention the, uh, you know, the, the business about starting with the work of the Ad Hoc Library Planning Committee. There's an opportunity to say that the programming that they came up with is valid, and we don't have the resources to meet it. That doesn't invalidate the work that they did. They came up with an appropriate program and programming for this community. And, and the five of us believe we can't make that happen. Now, I don't think we can decide what to do then on our own. I think we need to talk to Ben. I think we need to talk to the library committee because if people are going to say, "All right, if you can't come up with those resources," I'm not going to say, "All right, cut everything 4% across the board. That's dumb." So we got to ask people, "All right, if, if, if you're telling me in your professional expertise, if we don't have the resources to do this, then you have to cut programming or you have to cut infrastructure. Show us what it is." Because we may find that that cut is so intolerable that we have to go all the way back and, and revisit our, our budget limitation that we set.
Well, that's, and that's the best interests of the town trigger that I want to add in there.
That's what I was going to say, that we, we need to keep in mind that whatever we're coming up with has to also pass that third test of what's the best interest.
I think one, one thing that isn't on this list that you brought up though, that I, that is new and I, I think is well worth exploring is that aspirational funding piece, is if you can get those, if you can get all the other pieces together, there may be the potential for that aspirational.
I think it was on the list because I think in the list that you had up there, they had private trigger and then private goal.
Right.
So, and I assume that the difference between those is the aspiration.
That, that is what I meant.
I, I think that's a, that's a, a new, additional concept that I, I think we may have missed.
Well, you know, I would say that, that I certainly heard something along these lines from Jan, um, late in the process, but I didn't arrive until late in the process. So I, I don't know whose, whose idea it is. But, but to be frank, this idea comes from a, uh, a distaste about the conviction that I think we have to reduce the budget. And I'd like to not reduce it further than we have to.
And along those lines, I wonder if one of the first things we should do, and maybe we're not getting there yet, but we're talking about budget, is, as one of our first set of experts to bring in, might be, uh, the Capital Campaign folks, Charlton and Joan, who have already done some work with assessing the community and, and what the potential is for giving. And I think maybe we need to talk to them again to see, you know, what will the potential be if we come back with a plan that's, that's a reduced budget or a smaller footprint or a smaller program or whatever it might be. I remember in one of the meetings, they were very clear, um, when we were talking about a $4 million project, they came in and talked to us and said, "We feel reasonably confident that we can raise half of that, $2 million." And then there was some further discussion about-
But, but they, they drew the line right there.
Well, that, that's my point, is that, is that there was some further discussion about possibly having the budget be a little bit higher. And they, they popped right up and said, "Wait a minute, you know, we're not, we are not committing to 50% of an unlimited budget. Our commitment or our belief is that we can raise $2 million." Well, now the question to ask them is, are they, can they still raise $2 million if it's a different program? If it's a smaller program? Or is, is the amount they can raise left? But at any rate, I think we, we need to find that out, um, going forward as to what, what they think. And they have done some work. They've already been out there, talked to people in the community and, and had started the, the groundwork for Capital Campaign. So I think we need to reengage with them fairly early in the process.
That, that makes sense. I mean, my, my gut still says the best thing we can do for the budget of this library is to reduce the acrimony.
I agree. Um, but I think that, that piece of information is, is going to be guiding for us. If they feel that $2 million is still out there to be raised and we're lowering the budget, then that, that means that we can go back to the taxpayers and say, "We're going to have a budget and, and the taxpayer responsibility part of that is going to be less than 50%." Maybe that's not true. I don't know. But that's why I believe we have to engage with them and, and see if we can find out what they have learned about the community and what they might suggest to us.
I almost kind of feel like the, the private trigger, what we proposed last time, that their goal of $2 million, to me, kind of feels like the private trigger plus the aspirational funding. Like they, those two numbers together was about the $2 million. That was their kind of plateau. So bringing the private trigger portion down from $2 million to something that they feel reasonably comfortable that they could get quickly, which would set that trigger off for us to release the bond, and then still having that goal of hitting the $2 million, but that difference, that delta would be the aspirational funding. And then you get a nicer chandelier at the end of it. I don't know. You don't need a chandelier, Ben. It's a joke. No?
I think, we're still at a high level, which I think is good. And, and, um, I think it's, it's useful for us to take some time to think about this construct before we delve into actually assigning numbers to this. But I don't want to take a lot of time. If you guys believe in this system, I, I think it might work. I, I'm certain that there are people who are looking at this and saying, "You are still skipping the elephant in the room. How the hell is this going to work when it comes to site selection?" And that is the hardest one because I can't, we can't start with the recommendation of the Ad Hoc Library Planning Committee. There was none. We restricted the conversation to one Lime Rock. So the only other tool that this, that this thing provides is here. And we can't start there either because we don't have the budget. And I'm, I'm sensitive to what I heard from, from Jan and others, which is that if you start with a number and shoehorn the programming into the number, then you're going to end up with, you know, the sort of lowest common denominator. And, and I get that. But I don't think that's what we're doing if we, if we break it into those three different categories.
It's early, yeah, I was, I was breathing. It's, it's early in the game and, and maybe we shouldn't ask this right now. But does this board feel that if something changed in the plans or, 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 you know, one or two or three big things changed, would we, do we feel there's any possibility of going back with the same financial numbers? Or is it so plainly obvious that the taxpayers' contribution and the, uh, probably the private funding contribution will go down by some amount?
So to me, to me-
The latter one.
Yeah, I think we have a-
I think you're probably right.
We have a responsibility to do what we can to make this more likely to pass.
Right.
And-
No, we need to also keep in mind that there were a lot of other costs that were melded into that amount.
Sure, it's not only-
That we don't necessarily need to consider, you, to consider, you know, that, do we need to worry about the intersection out there and redesigning and should that be part of if we go to one Lime Rock Street? Should that be part of the cost of building the new library?
That in and of itself is, is worth a fairly strong half-hour discussion, discussion, yeah. Because what we don't want to do is to artificially lower the apparent cost of Lime Rock Street by ignoring something that we're going to go ahead and do. That's not playing cricket. But on the other hand, if we can have a design and, and have everything work and 10 years down the road say, "Gosh darn it, it really is time for that confusion to go and, and spend money on that," then they're completely divorced.
I mean, the part that I worry, the, the, the part where I worry that this falls flat is in the notion of a head-to-head comparison of two sites where those two sites are on equal footing. I checked in with Megan and what we know about the Lime Rock site right now, we know on the back of about $40,000 of expenditure. That strikes me as an expensive way to have an honest debate. But-
In other words, spending $40,000 for the RES?
You don't know that that's what it would take, but if that's-
Spending anything for it.
But if that's what it took, that's an expensive way to have an honest comparison.
Right. But there are test borings that, that, um, the steering committee had.
For RES, are there?
RES, yeah.
No, they, they weren't.
I don't think that's true.
Test borings were only on one Lime Rock and Memorial Park.
To find the ledge line.
I'll do my research.
Unless they were done for some other purpose, which I've heard-
Since I've been on the board.
Okay. I've heard talk about something, some test borings on that site, but I haven't seen any evidence of it. I asked Mike and he didn't-
But ancient history, when they were going to put the school there in the first place.
We might find something from there. I want to be clear, I'm not insinuating that it costs $40,000 to have an honest conversation. We have to get to the bottom of that. Because it's disingenuous if we're telling people we're going to try and have an honest conversation about this when we know we're not going to, we're not going to, you know, find or allocate the resources in order to get those two sites onto an even footing.
Well, the $40,000 was not just for the test boring.
No, it was, it was for fees to the architect mostly and for fees on the multiple proposals-
Yeah.
-that came in. But, you know, that, you learn a lot from that. And, and it's, it is a, it's a, it's, it's not a, uh,
But, but again, the, I mean, the good thing is we are open to our own ignorance. And, and I think-
Means we know what we don't know.
That barely, which is not a very human, usually humans don't know what they don't know. But, um, in the effort to keep everybody honest and in the effort to not make assumptions, we will assemble the teams that, the best teams we feel we can get. And then from there, say, "Do we have enough information?" I mean, it, it may be, it may be that, um, uh, you know, they can assure us and, and swear up and down. Or maybe they say, "This is just a super wild ass, yeah, super wild guess, excuse me."
Yep, thank you.
You're getting as bad as I am. Do we happen to, do we have any budgeted money still remaining for Reed and Company or do we?
I think, uh, if I, I don't want to put words in Megan's mouth, but I was just in there today. And I think she said that they estimated 40 grand to Reed. And we, we haven't spent 40. No, we haven't spent 40 on Reed.
We haven't?
That's what she told me.
It was 40 for the whole process.
But that, that, that comes out of the library. No, it's not coming out of the library committee?
No. The library committee paid for the RF.
Oh, the RFQ process, okay.
And I guess I'll give you the nature of why I'm asking is, I'm, I'm generally speaking, okay with what you all have laid out. Now I'm just curious, do we have to have funding conversations before we start bringing folks in? Or are we already at a place where we can say, "Set it up. Let's have Reed and Company. We're ready to rock and roll."
Well, so far we've, we've contacted, between Brendan and I, we've contacted about 22 people, half of which said yes. And those that say yes, say yes with no-
To what?
To, to coming in as, as experts.
So I, I haven't talked to hardly anybody.
Good job, Jeff.
All right, so I did all the work. And, and they'll, they'll do it for, for no money. For, for, you know, they understand it's a pro bono.
But that's just for advice as we move forward. It's not to go through the same process or the extent that we went through with Reed, Reed and Company. This is just to get us-
This is, this is the answer.
Architect selection is one of those questions. And, and I think, you know, and when I actually wrote that light on there, that line on there, I was fully prepared to have Reed tell us, "I don't want any part of that process." Um, that's not the case. And as near as I can tell, he hasn't disqualified himself from, from being, you know, from participating in the future. But that's entirely separate from whether or not we want to ask anyone else.
I'm going to, can, Mr. Chair, can I just take a prerogative and do a very quick yes or no? Does this, the people assembled here feel that Reed and Company have, um, integrity and, and, and would be somebody that you would ask questions of and listen? Nod, nod, nod. Any, any shake, shake, shakes? So by and large, they did their job?
No, all right, so we have some shake, we have some no's. So, I mean, we have some no's.
There are some shakers back there.
Yeah. Say my question louder?
Yeah.
The question is, as, um, as hopefully unbiased but knowledgeable people about, uh, our project, should we talk to Reed and Company or should we not to? Or should we not talk to them? You guys say, "Don't talk to them." Okay. And you say, "No, stay open." Yeah, okay.
Does stay open mean maybe talk to them if, if we consider others?
Okay. Yeah, yeah. Mr. Sharper, then?
My only thing is the use of the word integrity. I don't question the integrity of Reed Architects' one iota. Okay? But being open to them and to any other point of view, I think is the way you want it.
That's, that's what, yeah, that, yeah. Yeah, yeah. That's, that's what we helped to prove to you.
So the word integrity, I think, was problematic here in this context.
All right, thank you.
So we just will not just exclude them. We will continue to keep them within a mix.
Within a mix.
Yeah.
As it turns out.
I, I want to be clear that I value everybody's input. That is exactly the kind of exchange that I think we have to stop.
What I just did?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's the five of us and we make the decision. I, I was just, because it means I can't take, I, I don't have a temperature on that.
Okay.
I, yeah, and, and I am, you know, I, I am also apprehensive about my lack of context and not knowing that somebody is actually going to be perceived to being like totally biased. Because I haven't been paying attention long enough. So, you know, I'm counting on other people to finding a way to say, like, "You say you're setting up this system where it's transparent and there's no bias. And I'm telling you, you're wrong." Like, I don't know how to, I don't know how to square that. Like, I, we, we have to do our best. But, but if we knowingly or unknowingly allow that bias to come in, we're in a lot of trouble.
Can I ask, you've mentioned 22 experts. Are any of those going to be prepared to discuss that head-to-head site comparison and selection? Are any of those gonna be prepared to discuss that head-to-head site comparison and selection?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Because in a sense, when you take the motion out, that the cost is fairly reasonable in conversation.
Talk publicly about that.
And it, it goes over things that, I don't know, you know, and I've, and I've dealt with architects, but, uh, so, yeah, that's, that's, in a sense, that's a fairly easy one, and might wanna be done early on.
It-
Although I have to, I have to tell you, uh, this town has, uh, is, the architect community, architectural community is small and multi-layered, and we don't have any architects on our, um, our little yes sheet so far.
Uh, you know, I don't view that as terribly problematic, I mean, there are other architects in the world, I realize we may have to pay for them.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey Dad, you got any money?
It's starting to get weird.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
What are we doing now? You've got a number of things on here, and you just said, you know, one of the things we need to do is bring people in to talk about the head-to-head site comparison. I think earlier today you also had made mention that you had contacted, is one of your twenty-two, Jane LaFleur, and she was able to come in on that. Now, is she gonna be addressing or talking to that head-to-head site? Or is she gonna be just talking about her, you know, and I don't, I don't mean this derogatorily, but the walking community concepts and, you know, 'cause I've attended a number of her discussions.
So for starters, it's not for any one of us individually to pick these experts.
Right, no, it'd be definitely, yeah.
I think, uh, you, you, we have to put our heads together and, 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 and bounce ideas off of each other. We, we need somebody who can speak about this, you know?
Right.
Does anybody have a recommendation, and, right, I mean, that's the way this has to happen.
Then do we, are, are we sort of drifting toward the point of saying, well, we wanna talk about this at this point, on this night, and we will have in experts?
Yeah.
We'll talk about this on some other night?
One of the valuable things tonight, or shortly thereafter, would be to go down through the criteria and say, these three criteria seem as though they'd work together in a meeting. Let's label that meeting Alpha, for lack of anything better.
When you say criteria, you mean the subject on your sheet here?
And, uh, and then we can start to work on names. And I think, uh, Jane would talk about walkable cities. In her brief to me, she said, you know, you sure you want me? And I said, well, you know, give me, give me two, two barrels full. And she gave me two barrelfuls, which were very even-steven. You know, she said, this, these are the challenges you have here, these are the challenges you have here. If this is your goal, this is what you do, if this is your goal, this is what you do. So, um, she's well-trained, and she delivers well, and she hasn't said anything so far in this particular issue. My triggers say unbiased, but again, it'll pass.
We're gonna have to do our best to, to make that assessment. And again, the litmus test that I use is, people in the room know what you're gonna say before we invite you to come open your mouth.
Well, you know, I suggested, some of the conversation around the sites had been at recent meetings, you know, what's, in reference to the RES site, what's the highest and best use of that site for the town?
Yeah.
Yeah.
At some other point, we heard from somebody who said, you know, nine out of ten planners would tell you never move the library out of the downtown village or whatever, so-
Yep.
Along those lines, I might make a suggestion that we find a planner, not our planner, but find a planner to come in and talk to us, and the one that comes to mind is Rodney Lynch.
I don't know him, but if you say so.
He was down at Rockland.
Why would you ignore the professional we have on staff?
Possible bias.
I mean, well-
I, I, I just think, I think it would be-
Possible bias or demonstrated?
No, 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 no.
Hang on a minute, don't we pay him to have a bias? I mean, that's his job.
Yeah.
Is to make these decisions. I'm not, I'm not saying we have to bring him in, I'm just saying, the concept of bias in that example is a little odd.
I don't, I don't think that we pay him to have a bias, I think we pay him to be a professional and look at our ordinances and figure out if what's doable is doable.
He's supposed to make strategy.
Yeah, but that's not a bias.
Well, if that strategy favors, you know, development of one site and not the other, then-
I mean, I think we could hear from him, but I think that getting somebody in who is not from the town, I think, or, or not connected with the town in any way, might be, might be what we're looking for, it seems to me.
I can see benefit to that as well.
Trying to find out, you know, if somebody could look at this totally dispassionately, and I don't know that our planner can necessarily do that, he may not be biased one way or the other, but he may not be able to look at it totally dispassionately.
There may also come a time when we need to declare our own bias individually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pick a date, man.
Um, if we were to use Jane, April, uh-
She said seven.
Uh, February seventh is the only time she's running around the country doing this for other people. Um, so, so we have a meeting scheduled for the seventh, and, and we might wanna make that the, um, uh, long-term, what's best for the town with these two properties.
Would that also then include a planner?
Absolutely, one or two. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What, what do we wanna accomplish in the three previous meetings before the seventh, or are we starting to scrap?
What, no, I don't think we can afford to scrap meetings.
I don't either.
Yeah, yeah. The, I mean, I think that, I think that site cost, construction cost, accessibility, ease and use of parking, head-to-head site comparison, I think those could be all done in one meeting, and I think those might wanna be done in the first meeting.
I'll, I'll just say one thing out there to play devil's advocate. Unless you get some real professionals, I think that anything that comes out that has a dollar sign at the end of it-
Right.
I would question, even though I would be part of the process of coming up with it, for, for this board to come up with a cost-
You're talking about construction cost?
Construction cost.
That's, that's why, that's why we have six people in front of us, yeah, I mean-
Jeez, even then, do you see how much Reed and Company went through to get to cost? Unless I'm missing something here, and that costs are a lot easier to estimate than I'm in-
So look, this isn't the only time we're, I mean, at the, at the end of this, when we come up with what we believe is the responsible thing to put in front of the voters, you gotta price the thing, you gotta make sure that you did it correctly.
Yeah.
And, and so I, I don't think, uh, we, we-
But you can't price something unless you know where it's gonna be, and what you're gonna, and how it's gonna be framed.
So you, so you set targets, and you talk to people who know what they're doing, because they do this for a living, and they tell you, no, you're way off. And then you revise.
So i- if we had two engineers, two architects, and in that meeting, um, don't need planners, that would be, uh, uh, you know, have a, a, a GC in here, or two GCs, and a, and a-
What's a GC?
General contractor.
Okay.
Um, of the upper level of the-
Just bringing in acronyms that I'm not ready to jump to.
I, I, I deal with these people, and I still don't know anything about it, so that's why I wanna, I wanna be talking to people. But, just a second, to, to Owen's point, um, you know, we can sit back and watch the, the discussion between two of those guys and get a good idea of what's involved, and work with big round numbers.
So you wanna have that selection of experts in on the, in our next meeting on the thirtieth? Or?
Yeah, I mean, does it, well, I'll, I'll, I'll pose it as a question, does that particular set of four attributes-
So, so, say them again, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna write down how, how many blocks of-
Site cost, construction cost, accessibility, ease and use of parking, and so-called head-to-head comparison and selection.
But how, how can we look at site cost or construction cost without knowing what we're building?
Because you, because you don't, you say, you, you, you put things out, you say, you, you start with some givens, you say a, um, a, a, a building that has, if it's a two, you say a two-story building with forty-five hundred square foot exterior footprint. Put it here, put it there, what's involved? You know, and, and then you start taking notes, and then you have a one-story building.
Is your expectation that we have gone through and set the budget before this meeting?
No, because I, well, I think we could, we, I think we could talk about the budget now in, in somewhat loose terms, because that's, and, and maybe we should talk about the budget at tonight's meeting. Because if anything that we want feedback from, we want feedback from, from tolerance of, of desire and ability to pay.
We have three people who just, four people who just saw this for the first time.
Yeah.
So, I, it's important to give them an opportunity to react to this.
I wanna suggest a different order entirely.
Yeah, that's fine, go ahead.
Just to see what this, so, so we've got five meetings ahead, you say Jane LaFleur can come on the fourth, and that's when we would have planners, or the seven, the, the fourth meeting, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
I think the first meeting, quite honestly, is programming. I think we need to ask the library committee and our library staff, we need to give them a charge, and it's a fairly short charge, if we're meeting, you know, on the thirtieth, which is less than two weeks away, to say, okay, we need you to come up with something, programming size, that's smaller than the proposal that failed, and, and how much smaller I, we can, I think, leave that to their discretion somewhat at this point.
Ben has already given us that, if, if we reduce it to a single story.
But I think we need to hear about, you know, what, some of the discussion we've already had, what can we cut, so to speak? In other words, Brett, Brett, Brendan said, you know, we can't do it a four percent across-the-board cut, that doesn't make any sense. We need to hear the priorities of the library committee and the library staff as to, okay, if we have to make this smaller, then here's the cuts we're gonna make, and we're gonna come to this final decision, and we think that a building of somewhere in the range of X to Y square feet is reasonable for the town of Rockport. Seems to me that's a first step.
So, big, well, I, I'm gonna keep on this topic for just a moment. So you, you wanna put back a charge to the library committee and the library itself, is to say, for this program, you need between this and this? You want us to, want them to come back and say, you, we can live within this range, or this range, or this range?
I think, I think we have a conversation with them. They're our experts when it comes to this, they're our experts on programming. Building size, okay, but, but they're our experts on programming, we've gotta nail that down, I think. And that, so that would be the, the number one meeting on the thirtieth. I think the, the public-private budget situation with, uh, the, the Capitol Campaign folks is next, and then the one after that would be the, the laundry list of stuff that you just talked about, which is pro, uh, accessibility, parking, head-to-head site, and, and construction costs and all that. Knowing that we'll have, at that point, we'll have the programming and, and an idea of what the private funding could be, and then we move into the site and, and then go on from there. So that would be, my suggestion would be that I think we need to answer that programming question first.
And could I just build in second that, because once you have programming space, you have relative square footage. Well, that's where you can get kind of the input from the professional community, or give me a range of cost per square foot for complete construction costs, and then based on the programming, we can figure out, times three hundred and sixty a square equals, and we try to then figure out, all right, did this fall within the budget cap that we had given for ourselves? Or do we need to reassess programming, figure out, hey, we've got a little wheelroom to grow, we're two hundred thousand dollars less than what we thought, where can we add some, or we're three hundred above?
I, I wanna, I wanna use an analogy here that may or may not be helpful. But if my wife and I go to buy or build a home, it's tempting to say that we start with our list of requirements and desirable attributes. But I don't think that's really honest. You begin by some understanding of where the money's gonna come from, of whether or not you can get a loan, and what level of debt you're willing to service. That's where you start, so I don't go looking on Beauchamp Point, 'cause it's never gonna happen.
I agree with you, so going through the budget process to set what our cap is, and figure out what we all feel comfortable as is acceptable for the, the taxpayer burden, then that's immediately followed by the programming, you times that by the square foot, and then you figure out if that number that we came up with, programming times the square foot, fell within the cap that we felt was appropriate.
I don't wanna ask Ben and the library committee to cut their programming. I think they did their programming correctly. I wanna tell them, I don't think we can get it for you. So let's square these two things, what happens now?
And I think that's what I'm suggesting, 'cause I'm, I may, perhaps I said it wrong, but I think what we need to have is not necessarily receive a recommendation from them, but have a conversation with them.
Yeah.
About, you know, we know that the, or we, we are making an assumption here that we have to lower the budget, which means we have to lower the, the size of the building, which means the program is gonna have to be shaved in some way, shape, or fashion. So I think having that conversation, and if you wanna have the, I, I, and this is, this is the tough part that you guys alluded to in the beginning, because these things are hand-in-hand.
And they may, they may tell us something that we know as soon as we hear it, well, that is never gonna pass. And, and we've gotta figure that out.
So I think, between the programming and the, and the budget conversation, which one is first and which one is second, I guess, is, I mean, I'd like to see the programming first, because I think that will help the Capitol Campaign folks. You know, if, if they come back and say, well, we, we're proposing that you cut, just for the sake of argument, we're proposing that if you cut the Marine Room out entirely, that we can make the program fit. I'm not advocating that, but I'm just saying, that now all of a sudden, the Capitol Campaign people come back and say, well, wait a minute, the Marine Room is what defines the Rockport Public Library, now we can't go out and raise the money. So the two things are interrelated.
But also, if the, in, in sort of recent consciousness opening, if, uh, if you architecturally create the Marine Room in a place that it could be built a year or two from now, a- after the rest of the building, and that worked in a, in a master plan, and that gives you a touch longer for somebody to say, you know what, the library really isn't a, this special library, I'm going to get my friends together and, and give you four hundred thousand dollars, and then you have, you have that aspirational aspect to it.
And that's something I think we could find out by talking to the Capitol Campaign folks. You know, is, is that enough of a thing? 'Cause the aspirational funding, and, and I like the way you guys divided that out, because the aspirational funding is for just something like that, something that really strikes home with somebody that they really want.
We shouldn't, but we shouldn't hold anything at hostage.
Well, I agree, I agree, but, but, but what I'm saying is that, you know, nobody's gonna give aspirational money to buy an air conditioning unit. I mean, it isn't, it isn't very sexy, for lack of a better term. Uh, but to, to have something really special in the library that somebody can say, gee, I was a part of that, and I, I helped to, to add that, like the auditorium at the high school.
But that doesn't feel like we have unique or even helpful skills to identify what those things would be.
But I think the Capitol Campaign folks might, because they've talked to people in the community, and they may know-
And the library committee.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it has to, first, the first conversation in that scenario has to come from, from the library committee so that, you know, we can be open to things. Is it, is it scrimp, scrimp, and scrimp everywhere? Or is it, gosh, that means X and Y just won't happen, but A, B, C, and D can happen in full-fledged, you know? And, and, and we're certainly very well-aware and respectful of the hours and hours and hours that you and Dick Reed spent, and, and you, Ben, had, you know, quite a significant learning curve, and, and came out in the end saying, wow, look what we were able to do with the space that we have, which is the magic of architecture. So for that particular meeting with library committee, with library, with, uh, those things, I, I would say that's a, that's definitely one that we would have either Dick Reed, because he's so intimately involved with the conversations, um, or someone like him, uh, to, uh, to, to be a part of that. Because again, that push-pull is where the brilliance comes in, and, and, and someone says, oh, if we just do this and this, and, and we're not worried about elevators right now, we're not worried about stairwells, we're worried about programmatic, uh, areas, how can, you know, is there a further opportunity? One of the things that he did well was to, whether you like it or not, he was able to identify spaces that temporarily could turn into other places. You know, come three o'clock, ding, it's now this. So-
One thing that's worrying me right now is where our discussion has gone, it's almost like we're gonna accept a building like this, knowing that in two years we're gonna add on. Yeah.
Well, we've, we've gotten to easy sexier things.
We don't wanna be setting ourselves up to where we know we're already putting out there something that isn't gonna function, isn't, isn't suited, it's not in the best interest, because we only have this amount of money to do this. And, but we will leave the children's area out of it, and, and hope somebody comes along and gives us a bunch of money that we can then add on over on this site, and we'll make special design so that we have all this space over here, we can just extend out the building over here.
Wait, so what's our alternative?
Well, if you don't believe-
To again propose something that the taxpayers thinks is financially unreasonable, because we wanted to set ourselves up? I'm, I'm with you, if we could build the library that we all want, if money was no object-
I'm, I'm not saying that we gotta build a Taj Mahal, but what we don't wanna be setting ourselves up for is knowing that in a couple of years, we're gonna have to come back- that in a couple of years, we're gonna have to come back and add to it. The stories that I've heard, and I wasn't here at the time, but when the last addition of the current building was added, they already knew they were out of space. So, you know.
Okay, so, so let's put aside the aspirational, we're talking about the aspirational because it's sexy and it's full of, of possibilities and everything. But it doesn't, if we were to talk anymore about the aspirational, we have to say, those things that are aspirational are, are extras. You know, we have to figure out within the first two, and Brendan, tell me if you, if you don't agree with this, but we have to figure out within the first two, how to have a working library.
Correct.
Because, because the, the aspirational's are just that. It's the, it's the, the one, and, and it doesn't need to be even wholly in charge of something, you know, the Strom auditorium was, was made larger because the state said, we'll give you this much money. A, a high school should only have an auditorium this big. And Camden, Rockport area felt otherwise, so they made it bigger. But they didn't, they didn't cut the whole thing out and say, you wanna, you wanna performance art space, go, go pay for it. So, you know, with, with a good, brilliant architect and with somebody who has this in their mind from the get-go, the first figures we have, the first two, you know, on the budget would, would be the, the tax contribution to it and the private funding has got to yield a, a library that is satisfactory.
And, and I understand your point, but, but I, I trust the library committee and the head librarian to tell us when we've crossed into that threshold of, you shouldn't be doing this at all. It's, it's, it's below.
Well, that comes into the best interests of the town. You know, final filter piece again, I think.
Well, that, then that doesn't dissuade me from saying, or agreeing with Ken here, that the first thing we should be doing is talking to them, doing the programming.
Look, this is the way this is supposed to happen. I, my feeling is it would be helpful to them if they knew what our, what our budget target was. If I were in their shoes, that's what I would want. But, but I'm prepared to lose this argument.
Well, this is a workshop, so we don't raise our hand and commit ourselves to it. But are we, is there wisdom in going down the road and, and boom, 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 saying, at this point in, in the process, early on, you know, we've, we've, we've been in an oversight position, but now we're about to roll up our sleeves, what, what's each of our numbers?
I thought we were keeping ourselves open and flexible.
You mean budget, not even?
Budget.
Budget numbers?
Because I could tell you, but then all of a sudden I have a preconceived bias going into this thing from day one and we haven't even started.
And we will shoot fire arcs off when you change your mind. I, I asked, I asked, it's a question.
When you're asking that question, what number are you asking for? Are you asking for just the cost to construct the building? Or are you asking for the cost to prepare the site? Which in the case of one lime rock involves one thing, in case of, or are you asking involves something else? Or are you asking building the building plus putting all the furnishings in it?
I'm asking the whole enchilada. Last, last time we had site work, we had building and we had.
We had intersection, we had Memorial Park.
So you're asking what replaces the four million dollar number?
I don't concentrate on the four million dollar number.
Because?
Because the public burden to me.
Alright, so you cut to the two.
I almost always focused on the two. So for me, what would be acceptable is around one and a half million dollars for the public bond, somewhere around there. And still going fifty-fifty, bringing it to about three million with aspirational funding that could potentially bring us to three and a half million dollars.
Were you copying on my notes?
Can I ask a question? What's the alternative if, if we don't succeed?
Good question.
Camden's library.
So, I mean, we're kind of between the rock and a hard place with the, we've gotta succeed. I, I, I mean, I agree with you, Brendan. You know, I, I think you probably all have in your guts that say, you know, your gut feeling tells you what you think that the, the tolerance for the voters is, that you, that they, that they'll support. And, I mean, I don't know, I don't, my gut tells me one thing, but you all probably have a gut feeling and, you know, some of that is what we have to go on at some point. You have to, like.
Yeah, it's got, I mean, you asked the question. To me, it's gotta come down. I don't know how much it has to come down. I guess, I'm not sure that I see the, the even Steven thing as being especially valuable if there's a way to get the public burden even lower. So that it wasn't, you know, one point two-five, one point seven-five, if those are the numbers, you know, I, I, I don't know. I, I, I wanna, I wanna talk to the, to the Capitol committee. I wanna hear them say, yeah, look, you're never gonna raise that money if the library's smaller. And if, you know, if that's the case, then.
Or come back and say, if you come out with a superior design that looks, that, that the picture looks nice or the program looks nice, that, hey, we can go out and we can still get two million for you. Whatever that answer is. I think we need to have that answer.
But I think we know it's gotta come down and I think we know the public burden in particular has to come down.
And I think, you know, I'll come onto what Owen said, is the, the one point five public burden for me is really an absolute maximum and I'd really like to see it lower. This is, this is from what I've heard from people who've called me after the vote, who said, you know, it's just, it's about the cost. It's about the cost. And if we could, if, and I don't know, if the, if the Capitol campaign committee says, while we thought we could raise two million before, we still think we can raise two million with, with an outstanding design and, and a strong vote from the town behind it, then one million plus two million gives three million. And that's, maybe, that, maybe we can do something with that.
The one piece, and, and I don't have an answer to this, but the, the one thing that kept coming up for me is that, you know, a lot of people didn't like the four million dollar number, that they, there was a lot of focus on, it, it's a four million dollar building and not on, it was a two million dollar, a two million dollar commitment on the part of the town. They, they, for, they, they went right to the four million dollar piece and that's the number that they heard. And, and I'm, I, I'm with you. That's the way I would look at it, Owen, personally. I would look at, well, you know, I don't care what cost. I, I'm only gonna pay X number of dollars. But there, there seems to be a lot of concern about the total cost as well. I don't know how to answer that, but I, I think we, we have to pay attention to it.
Yeah, and I think one of the comments I heard was, Rockport doesn't need a four million dollar building.
I heard that too.
For whatever reason. And, and I'm not saying necessarily I agree or disagree, but that's what I heard. And so that total cost is important. And, you know, it, it's important to people, even, even if they're only paying, as you say, you know, some smaller percentage of it. I think that people want what's right for Rockport. And again, that's back to best interests of the town. What is the best interest of the town? And that's something that we have to.
We've all sat in poverty-abatement meetings with people who cannot afford this increase.
Right.
I've had conversations with folks that say, I don't really care how low you go. I can drive to Camden.
Yeah.
I can drive to Rockland.
You have the benefit, Owen, of, you, you've just recently campaigned and done a lot of door-to-door conversations with people, much more than probably anybody else, that, I mean, you've gone out and met with people and I'm sure you have a lot more personal insights with, with people talking to you about this subject.
Which is why the, the cost and, and the budget and how much we will be putting on the taxpayers is kind of the most important thing, because it, it came up more often than not. And again, Bill, I mean, I don't, I don't disagree with you in the slightest. To, to build a building that you know you're already, it's too small for you, I agree with you. But you can only have so many conversations with folks saying, I can drive right down the road to Camden. Why are you doing this to me? Other folks, it was, you know, I did, I, I talked with a lot of folks. I, I tried not to sway them one way or the other. Just present information, you know, I'm trying to combat some misconceptions here. No, 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 this is your cost and, and this is what we're trying to do and here's why we couldn't explore that, et cetera, et cetera. So a lot of the conversations were more informational than they were opinion. But the opinions that I did hear centered primarily, if not exclusively, around costs.
And were the people you were talking to, did they dwell on the two or the four?
That was an interesting thing, to have someone bring up four million dollars, to have me correct them and say, you're right in that it's a four million dollar library, but your burden as a taxpayer is gonna be two million. And within the space of that same conversation, have them again bring up the four million dollar library. And again, have to say, that's true, but your cost is. And so i- it's an odd, it's an odd thing. I was focused on, no, this is the cost to the taxpayer. This is your cost. They were more focused on the overall cost and why do we need that?
So the one thing I wanted to add is that, is that at the end of this process, for the five of us, for this board, we want to be able to walk out of here with a decision that individually we are very proud of and, and willing to support, because then we're gonna wanna support it. We're gonna want to go out and, and hit the streets and do whatever we can and, and, you know, bring the benefit of our listening, listening, asking, asking, asking to individuals.
And I think to speak to Bill's concern about building a building that's, immediately needs to be, you know, expanded or something like that, that's kind of our challenge, I think, is to say, okay, and maybe it's not possible, I don't know. But we have to try really hard to say, okay, we've got to lower the budget, which means we have to make the building a little bit smaller. We have to reduce programming as a result and we have to do it in a way that that building is gonna last the duration of the bonds that we take out to pay for it. And that's, that may be difficult, but that's, that's what we signed on for, I guess.
Yeah, and I suppose if we can't, then your added criteria of what's in the best interest of the town. It means, you know, then, that we, that we're not able to square that one.
Yeah, maybe.
We got off and we've got at least two competing concepts of how we wanna proceed in the next meetings.
We, we've got a, we've got a proposal to start with programming and the second meeting to delve into the budget. The third meeting to tackle your list, Jeff, was?
Uh, the, the physical aspects, physical cost aspects.
Site cost, construction cost.
Do you see them, in my list, I actually have them switched.
Do you see?
No. Yeah, the very set budget not to exceed, but that's just me, that's just my opinion.
Same page and we're gonna lose.
Cool. Well, you know, and I, with the Capitol campaign committee, they, they made it pretty clear that unless they have a design, they can't tell you how much they think they can raise.
I understand, Bill.
We can have a conversation with them.
We can't, we can't start with more information than we have.
Then.
And I think if we, if we do the programming piece, have, have that discussion first. And I, with the permission of the board, and I'll ask everybody, I would like to ask actually Ben and Ann, since they would be the ones that we would be calling in if, if we'd have a programming discussion on Monday, the thirtieth. I'm gonna ask the board for permission first to ask if that's a reasonable timetable for them. Is that an okay question to ask them?
That's a fine question.
I'm cool with that.
We'll find out shortly.
Yeah, yeah, it will.
If you are, it's worth two chocolates.
Yeah, yeah, right. I will make anything work as far as the timetable you need. I don't know what the library committee will say to that. But yes, I mean, I could have something for you by the thirtieth as far as really looking at sizes in the program. Just because I'm up here now, I would prefer to sort of know the level of reductions we're looking at before I just start cutting things. So, I mean, knowing a budget cap would be helpful. I mean, I'm not saying that I want that to dictate what we do and I, and I wanna do what's best for the town. That, I'm gonna try to still design the best library that is possible, but having a ballpark idea of what we need to do is important to me. Otherwise, I have no idea what I'm shooting for.
What you guys doing?
So is that?
You're playing with your.
That all makes sense. Is that good? Do you want more?
That's good.
Has our conversation that we've just had on that topic helped you at all, or do you need more than that? In other words, Owen said one point five million, I said maybe one million, total of three, that, that kinda stuff, does that give you enough of a ballpark to?
Three million, that's a twenty-five percent cut.
Yeah.
Right.
But it doesn't necessarily mean twenty-five percent space reduction.
Yes, yeah.
In fact, it could be a lot more than twenty-five percent to get it down a million dollars because you've got all the ancillary costs that have nothing to do with the physical structure that we're building.
And to go into that, I can work on making it smaller. I have no idea how that will impact costs. I mean, that would be something that I, I can give you an idea of, this is how much it's smaller. I could do the same math, square footage, cost per square footage. But without working with an architect on that, I, I don't know.
The important thing to keep in mind, if we do this meeting on the thirtieth, is that I don't think we would be expecting you, at least from my point of view, to come in with, here, here's the proposal.
Yeah.
But rather to come in prepared to have a discussion.
Oh, yeah.
And prepared to say, well, here's what we could do in, in this aspect of the programming and we could make some reductions here, we could make some reductions here. And then, and then we'll come back and say, well, we think that, that part of the programming is so important. We'd rather see, you know, could you cut someplace else? That, that sort of a thing.
It's, it's almost, I, you know, I, I'm, I'm trying to build on what you're saying here. It's almost that you are prepared to say that if we say, you're gonna cut that by twenty-five percent, you come back and say, well, then we're eliminating this component of the program or we're, we're cutting this. We're not gonna be able to serve this number of people or whatever.
Yeah, I can be ready to have that conversation on the thirtieth. I, if I'm, if we can continue, or I'll ask again permission of the board, if we can continue, it would be great to hear from the library committee and the librarian whether you buy into this concept.
Yeah, you, we'll give you a pass.
Upper four.
It's a discussion that we do have to have. I think that's important. I think the library committee, and I've mentioned this before, is behind this process. You know, I anticipate that your process may morph and change. What I want to make sure of is that, you know, the library committee has a chance to have a really good, firm discussion about, you know, next processes that we need to look at. We need to have the discussion with Ben. And I think that's what we're gonna be focusing on, on our twenty-third meeting this month. So your timing is good for the thirtieth. In terms of this process, I think that's good. I was a little worried about the aspirational funding part, not to incorporate that right now, because we just don't know. You know, it could be that, you know, Ben is able to come up with programmable space that we, as the committee, can work with him and agree with him on. And then we come back and ready to, to talk with you about, but I don't want to be so cut off that we, you know, cut off our nose to spite our face because then we have to look at, we are trying to plan for a library for the future. It doesn't have to be the Taj Mahal. But I think we're all pretty reasonable people on the committee and I think Ben has been more than reasonable in the work that he's done. So that's my long way of saying, in theory, I do agree, but it is helpful to know, you know, what that budget is. So if we're gonna be able to take a range, one million to one and a half million that you're looking for public burden, that is, is helpful as well. Does that?
Yeah, that's exactly, yeah. And, and I also want to invite sincere and earnest pushback. Because we have to get something that meets the budget that we set and that passes. And if, and if what we are asking, we need to know if it's gonna result in something that isn't gonna pass. We're not, we're not, don't, don't pull the punches.
Wait, 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 are we gonna ask him what's passable for the citizens?
Nope, 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 we're, they're gonna.
What I wanna ask Ben is, if what is passable for our citizens, is that a library that you even wanna work at? That would be basically my question to you. Are we proposing, not, not, maybe I worded that poorly, but basically, is this even doable? Do you, do you wanna call this home?
I, I will let you know if we get to the point where I wouldn't.
Yeah. Ken's example of this is not in the best interest of the community, if that's your assessment, we need to hear. Yeah, yes. And I will, I, I will tell you, yeah, we will tell you that. As far as the, the public-private triggers and the aspirational funds, as long as you do keep thinking about it as the aspirational funds are the extra, I'm totally happy with that. But we do need a satisfactory library first, that we know we're going to get. I don't want to move into something that is dependent on maybe raising. I don't want to move into something that is dependent on maybe raising extra funds sometime in the future.
We want to hear from you about what that library looks like if we fail to raise any of those aspirational funds.
Yeah.
Well, and I think one of the questions we ask the Capitol Campaign folks is, we ask them about this, is, is this reasonable way to go about things?
Yeah, we, I mean, I've never done this before.
And, and, and they may say, this is great, we have, we have talked to some people out in the community who just want a new library and they're willing to pony up to, to, to get the bricks and mortar done, and we've talked to some other people who really want a certain aspect of the library, so they, so that, I think it's possible that the aspirational funding may be able to be raised at the same time as the the nuts and bolts funding.
Or earlier.
And so, but we need to hear from them on that.
You know, one of the challenges, I, I, I understand where Ben is coming from and, 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 you know, we're kind of in the same place. One of the things is that construction costs are, are construction costs, and they're not going to vary a great deal for the construction of the building. You know, to get X number of square feet of space is going to cost $250 a square feet, within a few dollars. The site, site work, that's, there's, there's some things in play there, and that's some places where you can save money. But, you know, to get the space that you need to build, you know, the, the, the space you need to run the programs, and Ben has, and the Library Committee has done an excellent job of establishing the program. You know, that, it's not, you've done the work over and over and over again, so he knows this stuff inside and out. It's the, you know, the construction cost is the construction cost, and once you decide on, here's a number that we think we can go to the voters on, he can make that fit and tell you what you're going to lose by doing that. And, you know, I, I have total confidence in his, his ability to tell us that.
Yeah, when, in the last proposal and what we did, we built the library up to what we thought was an ideal number, and we stopped. So going sort of the other way, there are automatically going to be reductions in things that we're just going to have to make decisions about. Some of those can be really light and easy, you know, especially if we can keep it at one floor and we don't have elevators and stairs, great. Um, you know, we can save a lot of the program that way, but it, it'll be an easy, it will be a conversation that the information is easel, easy to get.
Nicely worded.
Yeah, it's not going to be an easy conversation.
Right.
Where we are now is that on the 30th, we'll be talking programming, space.
And can I, can I interrupt you for a minute there? Jeff, is there anybody on your list of experts that you've talked to that would, should be in on that conversation? Above and beyond Ben and the Library Committee?
Well, we just talked about the pros and cons of, of Dick Reed, but, um, there was a lot of symbiotic things that happened with the two of them. And, and I would be willing to suffer the charge of bias because if we're talking in abstract, we're, we're talking about in abstract in terms of square footage, we're not, we're not applying it to one site or the other. Is that fair? I mean, certainly the, the, the building was designed to be there, so I, I don't want to ever lose sight of the fact that good architecture is site-specific. But the relationships that the space inside that envelope has, he can, once again, knock heads with you, and, and, and it feels like, from what I understand, that you guys worked all together. And, and that, um, and that was a no meaning yes?
Yeah. He was very receptive to the changes that we needed. We workshop things over and over again, yeah, and it was often quick.
So, I, you know, there's nothing in asking him to do that that locks us in to?
Provided he's aware of where we are.
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah.
In the prospect of selecting an architect, may or may not be him.
Right.
And his firm.
Yep.
I don't think we need to have every potential architect that we're ever going to consider in there. I, I, it's not, it's not that, I just, it's not fair to some-
Do we want to look at him, or do we want to look at John Schmoltz?
Schultz.
Schultz.
He's not interested in participating.
Okay.
I mean, I, I-
I wish I'd heard that conversation with John.
The architect would help refine that number up or down. I don't think they need to be there while we define it.
I was going to say, I'm not sure that we wanted, I was thinking more in terms of somebody else involved with library programming that, that you may have, and I have no idea who your list is or what-
I ha- I haven't reached out to people like that at this point, and I'm totally open for-
I think an architect in that meeting would probably be more of a distraction, in my, my opinion.
Yeah, I think Ben, Ben has the information, he's gone over this and over it and over it.
And as Ben says, you know, once, once we make a decision on programming, then we can engage the architect and say, well, how do we do it? And that's when the massaging would come into the picture, so. I, I'd rather keep this to, to library programming folks, in my opinion.
So first meeting, who else would you like there?
The Library Committee and Ben.
I think Library Committee, and, and Ben, if you want to have your staff, any of your staff members, I think, I mean, these are all, Ben is our, our library head expert, but we have other library experts too. If, if any of them would, if you feel it would be useful for them to participate, you know, children's librarian, you know, whatever, I'd be open to that.
I'll be honest, I will probably solicit all the information from them and keep them out of this.
That's fine, that's, I, I just want to offer you the, the-
I mean, and I'll offer it to them, but I try to keep them-
There is, in, in terms of painting the picture, and it's not only for us because whatever decision we make, we want people to also, uh, be there and see on film or whatever, you know, that. So there is value in some of your people anecdotally saying, you know, talking about the value of what, of what they do and, and what they need, so. I wouldn't necessarily cut them out entirely. Uh, you know, might want to handpick, but, uh, you know, we, we are all still people, we're trying to become better people. And, and different ways of telling that story is, is advantageous.
Okay. Then the second meeting on February 1st, two days later, we'll talk Capitol, with the Capitol Campaign.
If we can get them to come.
If we can get them.
This is, this is a budget meeting.
With the budget, with, well, we'll talk budget and the Capitol Campaign.
Specifically, the ability of, you know, the Capitol Campaign folks to tell us, and again, it's a conversation with them, to say, given the past events and the work they've done in the community, where they think we are right now as far as ability to private funding, aspirational funding, and, and what they think of this model and, and things of that nature.
Have you already been in contact with them, Jeff? They're not one of the 22 people you've already reached out to?
Well, so let me ask a question about that, and I have all the confidence in the world in the people who signed up to, you know, and, and off, and contributed all their time the last time around. Since we don't know what this proposal is going to result in, it feels premature to say, these are the people who are going to run the Capitol Campaign. Because if they don't believe in what we come up with at the end, we sure, surely don't want them trying to sell it.
I don't think we're, I don't think we're saying that. I think we're saying-
We're grabbing their expertise.
Exactly.
Okay.
They're the ones who've most recently gauged the, the tenor of the community to be willing to contribute, and so I think they have value to contribute in that way. And they may very well come in front of us and say, we're not the right people for this campaign, or, you know, we're ready to go again, we, we don't know, but, but I think we're asking for their expertise.
I'm with you. Do we have, do we have a, a date on that one?
Well, if it was going to be the, the second meeting, it would be the first.
Okay.
It's only mildly confusing.
Now, question is, do we want to continue to look at having a meeting on Saturday the 4th?
Can we not? I'm starting to really enjoy my weekends. They're special now.
You're a public servant.
Yeah. Yeah, and the only time I get off are Saturday and Sundays.
I'm going to have to get a babysitter.
Okay, so we scratch the 4th?
I'm totally cool with all of the weekday meetings, can you just have the weekends?
But the 7th, we've already-
The 7th is-
We have to reserve for Jane and the, and the contractors and, is that where we also want to have the planner in?
Yeah, Jane and planners and everything, contractors would, should come before that, and, and quite honestly, I would put the contractors in February 1st and move Budget and Capitol Campaign to some other time. Because, because again, I think, I think that we can set a preliminary budget, the five of us, I think we could do that right now, and I don't, I don't, I kind of get the feeling we're not that far apart.
So you don't want to take a whole meeting for it, is what you're saying?
No, I don't, I don't think, you know. We, we could easily talk about budget for an entire meeting, but I don't think it's the best use of our time, and, and that's going to be, if we put that number out first, that and the site selection are the two big hot buttons. So we put that out, and then as, as we're going along everything else, we start to hear people's reaction to that budget. And either we're crazy loonies, or we're reasonable, or we're too low, or, you know, something like that, so. I think that's a good strategy in terms of, of us getting feedback too. Again, it's our decision in the end, but we're, none of us are in a vacuum.
Yeah, and barring bringing the entire town in, there's no expert that can come in and tell us what we think the taxpayer is willing to share as a burden than us. We are, in theory, the experts.
This is subjective, I mean, we just have to do our best.
Okay, so then on the 1st, we've got general contractors and who else?
That's what I would say.
Architects?
General contractors, architects, yeah.
How, let me ask this question. How long do you think the conversation with the Capitol Campaign folks will take? Is that a short conversation?
I think it is.
Can I do both at once?
Can we do, can we bring them in on the 30th? And maybe get some interplay between?
Oh.
I like that.
You know, between the program and the-
Does that strike you as helpful or problematic?
Uh, no, just have them go first, I suppose. More in-depth.
Yeah, I mean, yours could go from two hours to 20 hours.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, so we'll try and fit-
But I think having both of them there, that, that may allow for some back and forth because, you know, the Capitol Campaign folks may, if they go first, and then, and then they stay around and hear what Ben and, and Ann and the committee have to say, they may come back and say, gee, this is a great idea, we think this might strike, you know, it's, I think the two are linked.
February 1st is then-
So the 1st is general contractors, architects, and engineers?
Yes. Dealing with all the physical costs of the site, of each, both sites, with an allowance for it being an abstract.
So we're canning the Saturday meeting, is that right?
Can we, can we just, as part of this, um, I know we don't vote or anything, but can we, uh, ad hocly, uh,
Ad hocly?
You like that?
Is that a word?
No, I just made it up, it's like broccoli. Can we ask Rick or someone to look into the history of the RES site for test borings or any information that would help us?
Yeah, I can check with Mike again and have him go back to-
You're going to have to ask Steve on that one.
Yeah. If there's any information that's already existing out there that would help us?
Simon?
Scott Simon, my understanding is they did, they did test borings.
I don't think so. I think that was a very abstract type plan.
They looked at, they, they went out there and they looked at it, walked across the site and-
Did they have a dowser?
You know, the only thing, I, I wonder if at, at some point when the school was there, when they were trying to decide, did they, did they do some research on what was-
I, I'm sure they did some research when they put the last edition on the back.
Well, that was actually the least of the research, that's the one that was worst.
Well, but they found out that, you know, there's a lot of information because there's a lot of fill back there too. So somebody had to bring that fill in, and there has to be a quantity of fill that was brought in.
Start with Steve and see if we can find something.
Yep.
Howard D. Born's no longer with us.
Howard D. Born, I don't know.
Yeah, I think he is, okay, because there, there was, uh, you know, the people that were on the committee.
Yeah, I think he's-
Which committee?
On the, RES Building Committee.
Back in the, what was it?
Um, in the 50s, well, 56 it was finished. Yeah, the first part.
That's a sort of back-to-back machine, huh?
There was a plaque in the front of the building that had all those names on it, I don't know what happened to that.
That's what I was thinking.
So can we talk about meeting number three and, and what the skillsets are that we're describing?
Okay, meeting number three, now we're talking about Tuesday the 7th.
That's the Jane LaFleur and, and, and planners.
All right, so.
We go with the Saturday meeting.
Yeah, so planners, what? This is, this is-
Yeah, the planners and Jane LaFleur.
This is, this is urban development, this is, um-
What does it mean to build on this site versus this site?
Yeah.
What, what opportunity are we losing if we put it here or put it there? Or what are we gaining by put it here, put it there?
And, and everything we consider for one site, we consider for the other, so, you know, we, we, we truthfully go in and say, if we don't have a building on Lime Rock, what are the opportunities for that?
What do we, what do we do with the site if we don't put a library in for both sites?
Now, I added one of the, a function to your list, and I put legal.
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 As part of the-
Well, I, I, I put it on the list of things that, that, uh, you'll notice on this breakdown.
Okay.
Under the else. So we do have some questions that, that people have, uh, have given us about legal aspects, and we have some questions on our own. I don't think that that's necessarily appropriate for that meeting, and it could be just part of like a, a regular-
So let me just, let me just ask a question, and this really is just genuinely a question. Do we have to answer every single one of these things?
On this list?
Public in a meeting? Can, can one of us, can one of us accept a task to go and get an answer from an expert and bring it back to the board, is that?
Well, here's, here's my, I have two reactions to that. As, after 15 years on the zoning board, it was very, very clear that you don't go do a site walk on your own because you see different things, and then if you don't represent that really adequately to the board, you're making a decision based on different information than they are.
Okay.
And the ability for another clever mind to build on a clever, you know, not an acuity, but it, but it, an important question, build on it, build on it, now we have five times the information. So-
I mean, we have a, we have a town attorney, so if there's a legal question.
Yeah, I mean, the legal thing could well be just within, folded inside of a, a normal select board meeting. But, but it, it does have to be looked at. And I would rather, I'm, I would rather do Jane LaFleur and the planners and, and, you know, the designers, I'd rather give them magic wands and say, tell us, if we really worked very hard and, and, and did this, what, what's a possibility for that site, what's a possibility for that site? If there wasn't a library on there. Um, I, I think that's important information, particularly because this, the select board is the one that, that drives those visions into the future, however.
I'm still trying to finish this legal conversation. Is that a meeting, a separate meeting, or is it, is it going to get tucked into?
Tucked into a normal select board meeting.
Okay.
Quick sidebar.
Talking about legal.
Steve Beveridge says that there, to the best of his knowledge, no test borings were ever done. He said when there was something about the, the directional flow or something with the buses, Gartley and Dorsky did get brought in.
So it was a traffic study perhaps?
To reassess some things, but to the best of his knowledge, no test borings were done. But Gartley and Dorsky may have some information from surveying that they did of the site back when it was the middle school, or the elementary school.
So I'm going to grab my computer, which has the experts on it, I want, is it appropriate to vet them in public? See if anybody had any issues? Dave all said yeah.
Here or, well-
We're still recording.
The digibites live on in perpetuity.
I count seven people. Paul? Yeah, okay. Paul, I remind you, as a member of the Library Committee-
Yep, he just wants another piece of candy.
Oh. Take two.
Okay, well, first of all, I really want to applaud this effort, and I really want to applaud and emphasize the need to take that long view and not get lost in the weeds, because that's going to be your temptation all the time. Okay, because the weeds are always there, but you need to take that, you know, step back to the balcony and see the whole picture. And the big picture that's being presented to you, and I think that you're presenting to yourselves, is what is going to pass? And not only what is going to pass, but what is going to pass decisively? Okay, if it passes by 40 votes, you're in trouble. Okay, the Capitol Campaign Committee is in trouble. So you need to think about something that's going to pass that will really bring the community together with some enthusiasm about the plan, not with a lot of- Not with a lot of, oh, well, I'm so sick and tired about it, I'll go along with anything. That's not what we want. Okay, what we want is a new, bigger, better library that answers the needs of our community. Okay, and that's how we, cuz you're gonna have to sell this, too. Okay, but that's, has to be the approach. And of course, the question of size and cost are inextricably linked. I mean, you can't talk one without talking the other one. And the question of the site obviously is a very sensitive issue in the community. And what to do about that sensitivity, I don't know. Okay, I really don't know what to do about that, except to be aware that that's where the acrimony will likely rise. And the other thing is, when you wanna do a site-by-site comparison, intellectually, that makes a lot of sense, okay? But once you start doing that, site-by-site comparison, what you're going to be faced with are going to be rebuttals and refutations. Okay, and so that, it's, it's gonna be a, a real tough one there. And of course, I, I, I do have a bias, and I just want to remind you that a decision was made on the site. And I think if you want to fall back on that and say, we've made that decision, there was a lot of thought that went into it, a site selection committee, a steering committee, the, uh, select board made a decision about the site at that point. Um, and we're gonna, you know, hold through that so that that can of worms is sort of a settled issue. Now, the next question, again, from, from my perspective, not only as a library committee member, but as a towns person, is what's gonna pass decisively? Okay, and that is gonna be linked with size and cost. And I think Ben, if, if I understood properly, Ben has already done some work where he has been able to put together some square footage that is significantly less than what was proposed, and that does not cut into the programming. Now, I think Ben has said that much, right, but that if it cut any more than that, that would be unacceptable. So I think we're already getting pretty close to that, that, the square footage that's needed for programming, and that would be tolerable cost-wise. So again, I just want to encourage you to keep that long view, what will pass, what will pass decisively? And, um, yeah, that, that's about it, I guess, is, is what I wanted to say. But I think you're on the right track there. Yeah, the other thing I wanted to add is just don't get caught in the weeds. I mean, just as an observation from the audience tonight. You know, can you use the example of the marine room? Well, what happens frequently in these conversations is the example takes up 30 minutes of the conversation, and it was just meant to illustrate a point.
Right.
Okay, but we start talking about the marine room, but that's not the issue, is to illustrate the need for expansion to make sure you're building, uh, the building that we need. So I just wanna caution you about not getting too much into the weeds because it's gonna be such a distraction from the, the fundamental issue is what will pass and what is the appropriate budget that the townspeople will be comfortable with. And to go back also to what Owen was saying, you got me going now about people always going back to the four million. There is, I, my sense of talking with people is, there is a sense that they don't want anything that's going to appear to be extravagant. Okay, so four million, regardless of who's paying, sounds extravagant to people, okay? They don't want that. Again, they understand the kind of community they are, the kind of community they can afford, and that they are comfortable with. I know people who would go, who used to come to the old library because it was not fancy, like the new one in Camden. Okay, they're not comfortable in that kind of an environment, okay? There are a lot of people who go to the offshore restaurant because they're not comfortable at other places, not because they can't afford it, okay? But it's just because they just don't like that feel, okay? So there's a lot of that in this community, too. So again, I wanna caution us about, um, you know, it's not, yeah, yeah. Thank you very much for hearing me out.
Um, before you go in.
Sure, do you wanna just open it up to?
Well, I wanted to make a comment that our death, our timeline may get skewed this week, that the middle, uh, I'm sorry, MSAD, it has their meeting this week, and on their agenda is the question of whether or not they're gonna move their vote up on the new middle school to June. You know, which could have a big impact on how we want to proceed, given the questions and, and what we wanna put forward. And do we wanna be lo- lost in the, you know, what's the term, hubris?
I think we have to let this issue stand on its own, quite honestly. It's, I, I, if, if we're getting into trying to time the vote because it's up against something else, then I think we're, we're admitting.
Trying to hide our tax increases.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think we just have to proceed on our timetable.
I wanted to raise that. So you wanted to open it up, Jeff?
Uh, well, I mean.
You've already opened it up.
Yeah, we, we, we might as well entertain any other comments about what we've done so far.
The point was to finish with public comment, and I think we're pretty close to the end of it.
Right, yeah, yeah, and then just go over some specifics.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
Hi, I'm Liz Daly. I just wanted to check, um, on the expert lists. Did you, um, were you able to review or check to see if any have perhaps spoken for one side or the other? And that would maybe speak to Brendan's bias, kind of baseline. I ju, I think that's really important to just make sure that's in place.
We get that. We have notes from, from all of the meetings that have been held, and actually, after public comment, I'm gonna go down these and see if there's any, any, you know, throwing out. But, uh, yes, we're, we're certainly sensitive to that, and we, um, if we bring in anybody that has made a statement in favor of one thing or another, there better be five good reasons why we did it, why we brought them in, so.
Okay, okay, thank you. I, I just wanted, I echo what Paul said. I, I really like this process, and I thank you for your work, and, um, I, I'm hopeful. I'm hopeful.
Thank you.
May I have a chocolate?
Take two.
Correct pavlovian response. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Betsy Elwin. My first public comment is to reiterate that, you know, I think it's great that you're going through this systematically, and you have a strategic, um, plan for how you're gonna proceed. Um, and having said that, I think one of the most important pieces is, there has been a tremendous amount of public comment, and the meetings have gotten out of control sometimes. So I think you're gonna have to rein us in, because we all have things that we've said a million times before. You don't need to hear them again, and you don't need to hear them throughout the meeting. I think you need to have a firmer hand when you're running these meetings. That doesn't mean you're shutting people down. It means you're sticking to a process that you lay out at the beginning of the meeting, and you say, the time for public comment is at the end, and you don't entertain the back and forth that happens throughout, that's happened throughout meetings in the past. So I applaud your desire to do that. Just a couple of comments on, on the list that you made. Ignore the inconclusive or compromised votes. I agree with that in theory, and yet, your first step here in, in figuring out what you think the budget should be, you're not ignoring, or you're evaluating what you think the prior vote said. You are all, I think, assuming, maybe correctly, but I don't think that it's definitive. You're assuming that the reason the last vote went down was because people didn't want that budget. And so you're going into this assuming that you've got to reduce that budget or nothing else will ever pass. I'm not positive that you're right about that. I think there was a lot of misconception about that budget in an apparent, in an attempt to be inclusive. That amount of money, that $4 million, included all kinds of soft costs, furniture, everything. And I think it was a noble attempt to include everything, but I think a lot of people wrongly understood that's just how much it's gonna cost to put up the shell of a building. Then we're gonna have to pay for furniture and everything else. So, um, that brings me to my final point, which is, um, that filter slide that you had up there? Yeah, 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 yeah. The will of the proposal pass? There's a limit to how much you're gonna, you're gonna give it your best shot to come up with a proposal that you think will pass. And I think that's a fine thing to do. I think you have to do that. But I think you need to build in time and energy to push that proposal once you come up with it. Because you can, you can come up with the best proposal in the world, but if you present it to the voters a week before the election, because you've run out of time, because you've spent all the time coming up with the perfect proposal, then people have questions. People don't understand it, and you don't have time to explain it and, and lobby for it. So I would encourage you to build that piece in, because if you come up with a proposal that at first people are, are sketchy about, but then you're able to explain, well, it in, it includes this, and we considered that, and, you know, you can engage in some explanation, I think it has a better chance of passing than if you just present what you think is the perfect proposal, but don't build in that time to bring everybody else along with you. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I liked that just for a minute, and, and I did charge the remainder of us that we would have to go out on the road and sell it. But there's a very interesting, um, point made to us by, uh, a person who had been through another major community situation for, for public good. And her comment was, when they went to present the final plan, they were all prepared for all the things that they did, and they could explain anything they did. The entire meeting was about what they didn't do. How come you didn't do this? How come you didn't do that? Which are equally as important, because those are the, those are the kind of questions that we wanna, you know, get in the next five weeks. But, um, but that was a really good lesson for me to remember when, you know, prior to June, when we go out and do this, we have to be ready for those kind of questions as well. I yield back to the public.
Where are we at? What are we doing? I've got three meetings. Is there a fourth?
Well, somewhere along the line, we're gonna need to discuss site accessibility, ease of access, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
That comes, that's.
That's in the general contractor meeting, I think.
It's the general contractor meeting.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's, so that's the second one.
Physical aspects. Yeah. That's meeting number two. Um, let me read down, so our first one is library program. Uh, we got to make a decision on whether we invite Dick there or, or the architects. So let's go over the personnel of that so we can start calling them.
I think we were gonna try to camp Capitol Campaign on that one, too.
Sure.
And we work and invite.
And I think no architects.
No architects, yeah.
No architects. So meeting one.
Mm-hmm.
Capitol Campaign and Programming.
Yep.
Which means Library Committee.
Ben.
And Ben.
And whatever staff he wants to bring, if any. And, uh.
And I applaud your effort to protect them from us.
And the, uh, and Charlton and/or Joan, if they can make it, or anybody else who was on, there were others who were on that. I think that might be able to.
Lives as a country now.
Lives as a country.
Cheryl Lick D. is on, was on that committee. I'm not certain that she's gonna wanna continue, given what we talked about today, but she may.
But even if she doesn't wanna continue, if she'd be willing to, to let us know what she had learned and what, you know, she has some knowledge.
Okay.
Same for Joan and Charlton, at least.
Yeah.
So, second meeting, big, long meeting, physical assets. Talking about site, talking about cost of site, talking about in general terms, um, building on, uh, one site versus another. So all of those, all of those kind of questions. My feeling is we should have two engineers. Uh, we should have two architects. We should have one or two general contractors, and then we should have one, uh, contractor consultant. And I'll tell you about that in a second.
Okay.
And what else can you think of for that? If, if we're dealing with, um, I mean, we're, we're really dealing about the abstract and trying to paint this clearer picture of what could go on the RES site, since we, you know, have, we, we know what could go on the in-town site. But we want, we want it as, just as possible, as cleanly as possible, make, uh, apples-to-apples comparison.
Are we gonna have to do a significant amount of site work to both sites?
Well, that's, that's one of the questions.
A landscape architect versus just an architect architect?
I would hope the engineers would this, would be bringing civil engineering to that, such that we don't actually need a dedicated landscape architect, but.
And I'm, I'm kind of a big tent person, so I mean, if you happen to like, go to Three Dogs and there are six architects sitting there, and they all go, heck, yeah, we wanna come, I love seeing that banter back and forth with professionals in their space.
We also have to be aware of if we wanna make progress. If you have six architects, you got 12 different opinions.
That's pretty clever. I like that.
Two sides, two sides.
Oh, huh, no, okay, cool. I was, I just figured architects were like two-faced.
You thought that was a dig at architects?
Oh, I thought that was hilarious.
So my favorite friends were architects.
So, give me their telephone numbers later. So, uh, who, who I have actually talked to, and, uh, if, if you've talked to people other than that, remind me. Tom Albertson lives in Rockport. He is a consultant to builders, um, much more than a clerk of the works. He's, um, and so he has experience in many different kinds of things, but, but he, he also goes deep in that. He, uh, after he gave me an earful, he said, yes, he would, um, be happy to show up for a meeting.
Wait, did that earful make you feel like he was unbiased?
No, it, it, he was bouncing all over. He, he's knowledgeable. It made me feel that he's knowledgeable.
Okay, good.
Yeah. With a bit of whip-cracking and why the hell don't you, and that sort of thing.
I know Tom, so I can, I vouch for him.
Uh, I talked in person to Bill Lane, um, who is actually already, uh, on the town's payroll as, uh.
Towns engineer.
As towns engineer. He would, could, he's, he's willing to do it. He would not talk on behalf of Will. But Will Gartley, we'll, we'll throw his name in there cuz we use it in vain all the time. Obviously very knowledgeable and long history, and I think, tell me if I'm wrong, I think he comes to this situation without any perception of bias.
He did a bit of a study on the RES site when we were going through that first iteration with Scott Simon and architects.
Okay.
He was, and, and why I said he did some work, he was not part of the Scott Simon crew. He was part of one of the other crew that came in and wanted to bid on doing that work. And he had done some research on that site. He'd gone out there and walked it and things like that, and you understood the dynamics of the site.
So that makes him knowledgeable?
Yes.
We're not gonna.
Not biased.
No, and I've talked to Will a couple times about the library and, and the process, and I, I would feel reasonably comfortable that he's, he's been in different places as far as the site goes, but I think he would, he would give us an unbiased opinion.
So I'm gonna be so chancy as to say, because I haven't actually contacted him, I left two messages for Keith Rose. He's the, um, uh, plant manager for the, um, SAD 13.
Oh, yes.
So he, he's got big buildings, he's a big proponent, but, but practical, hands-on with things like, um, geothermal heating and stuff like that. I think he should be at, at that meeting, uh, just from cost perspective, and, and, you know, maybe even he says, you're being too, uh, you're being too naive, that won't work, you know, something like that, if anything comes up in his bailiwick. And, oh, and Dave Nazaroff, again, I'll be, I'll be rude and, and suggest his name without having yet called him. Good guy, very, uh, uh, you know, very capable and experienced, and he did help out the steering committee. So has, you know, has already thought about this.
So did Will Gartley. Will Gartley, uh.
Okay.
Dave and, um, John Schultz all came to the steering committee and gave their comments about the different site, site alternatives.
Okay. So, uh, and as we quietly said before, John Schultz is not interested in, in doing this. So any of those people for the, uh, meeting two, any of them get knocked out?
I don't know any of these people except for Will, really, so, um, I'd love to, you know, try and,
Yeah.
and do some due diligence and find out a little bit more about them.
Okay.
Well, I know Will and, and Bill and, and Tom.
Oh, I know Bill, yeah.
I don't recall any of them making statements.
Yeah, I don't either.
Particularly like the others that you mentioned, Keith Rose and Nazaroff and things. I don't remember them ever coming in with a, a statement or even receiving, um.
And I'm sorry, I'm adding Steve Beveridge to that because.
Oh, yeah.
We can boss him around. Cuz he's a nice guy and he knows a lot.
I'll also.
Just so long as we preserve the ball feels.
I have, I have no clue, but, um, Chris Groton is a friend of mine. He works for FI Home Builders. He's, he's more of the, the actual architect, not the, did it for the last 30 years now, I own the company type, type person. Only just because I, he's a younger guy, I know he has no biases, he's very. Only just because I, he's a younger guy, I know he has no biases, he's very knowledgeable. If he happens to be free, I'll see if he can swing in.
And big, big projects?
Yeah, is there like municipal scale projects?
I would say big projects. I wouldn't necessarily say municipal. It's, it's a little more residential, but they're very high-end residential. But they, they did the entryway to to the town office. Which is pretty small scale, but
Can you reach out to him and then get back to me?
Yep.
Okay.
And the other names on there I have, Eric Denny as a representative of the Ad hoc Library Committee. He actually
Is super busy?
Well, no, I got him. He's, he's
Wow.
I owe him, I owe him a million dollars.
Donate it to the library.
He he is willing to help us out and, and probably would, would be at meeting two, I would say. Because they
Programming.
They went over physical, physicality of
No, oh, the site, the contractor.
Yeah, yeah.
Why would he be at contractors opposed to program? Or just because
Well, I, I told him I wouldn't ask him to more than three meetings, so
Right now, we're down at three.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put him in on programming as well. Okay.
What does he bring to the table for the programming?
I don't know, I mean Reminders of the conversations at Ad hoc. Is that reasonably fair? We're losing the rest of our audience.
The programming meeting is fairly well set before the
Ben can't go, he's an employee.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Have a good evening.
The, the program and the site was pretty well set for the Ad hoc Library Committee. There was no discussion on that committee about changing
Was it a subcommittee or was it just you and Dick?
It was, it was a select ward.
Yeah, we
We gave him the charge.
I, I think Eric has
He tied his hands.
I think Eric has value, and I think Eric has value when it comes to large building construction.
Yeah, okay.
That's the piece that
That's what I would say.
Yeah, okay, so
The programming stuff.
So, meeting two.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. We and I put in Jamie Frankamano. Are we making up our mind on that?
I think if he's gonna, I think the appropriate meeting for him would be the planning meeting.
Right, but
And I think, I think it's fine for him to be there, but I think, you know, perhaps finding somebody else, and if Rodney Lynch would do it, and I
Rodney is not a planner. I sent you, you an email. Rodney is not a planner.
Do we have any former Rockport town planners still in the
There's Bill Maypower, he's down at McCad.
That would be kinda cool to go back out.
Well
He would have a bias, I think.
He would have a bias.
Yeah, I think he would have a bias.
Okay.
He's famous for saying that too many cars is a good thing.
Parking is a problem.
Having parking problems is a good thing.
Parking is a problem to be solved, is what he said.
Yes, yeah. So I think he would come, you'll be perceived
He would be inflammatory.
Well, he'd be perceived as having a bias. Because he was very favorable for keeping the library in town.
Okay, so by our rules, he's, he's
Yeah.
A lot of expertise, but I think it would
Yeah, but I don't think he would
I think we would know what he's gonna say, you know, by your, we'd know what he was gonna say before he came in.
And I think Jane will give the same information that the planners would give, be giving us. She'd be covering the same bases.
Yeah, she's gonna be carrying a lot of water.
Yeah.
But, but I think that, you know, she's
It's merit in having more than one individual in the room.
Well, yeah.
It's just merit in having a couple of people.
Yeah, 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 yeah. All right, well, we have a touch of time.
Yeah, the, the other one that we had as a town planner, of course, is Tom Ford.
Yeah. If he would be.
And that's what, three, four years ago now. You know, I, what I'm thinking here is somebody who is familiar with the town, which is something that Jamie would bring.
Yeah. Do you know how Tom, do you know what Tom Ford's gonna say about this, before he comes in?
I don't.
I don't, actually.
He really didn't have that much to do with the earlier iterations, and he's been retired in hope. What's the matter?
I think there are a lot of people that find Tom problematic.
Okay, well.
And provocative.
Then, you know, if that's the case, then we we don't want that kind of a
Yeah, his, his conduct at, at Midco Solid Waste, as a reminder.
Okay, I mean, there's no reason to, the aim is to access the expertise without raising passions for any reason, so
I did, I did get a message and I, I, there was a message that came in on, when you come to planners, that came in through the conversation, the comments, recommending, why, why don't we call the town, you know, the towns of Falmouth, Yarmouth, or Freeport, they all have municipal planners. And I have some contacts in those towns.
Sounds great.
And if I can, you know, if we can get one or two of them up to come up here, that would be
That'd be good.
I'd like to throw out John Morris, but, and I, I, I would feel extremely comfortable with him. One thing that does come to mind, though, is I've had conversations with him. He had come up with a preliminary, just very bare bones in his own spare time, design for the One Lime Rock site. And he had also spoken with me about the, the best utilization for the RES site, which didn't include a library. So I would feel very comfortable with him, but I could see how, based on certain past things, there could be some
That sounds like bias to me, or even if it's not, it sounds like our definition of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I just wanna throw it out there.
Prior involvement.
Yeah, I would say that that's probably best left out.
Yeah, I, you know, I can go, I, I agree with Rick, you know, somebody that, that is a professional planner on
Sign that he did was a both.
You know, is removed from this area.
But at some point on the planning one, you know, professional training and passion for are gonna go hand in hand. So, let's, let's keep him on the B list, and if we can't get anybody else, maybe, maybe bring him in.
John Morris?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, if nothing else, he may be able to answer the question, well, what else could we do with the RES site?
And, and yeah, and that's, and what else can we do with the, the in-town site? You know, both of those are, are important because that really is a germane part of our our challenge.
Yeah, I think it's actually one of the few things that we have to address that the Ad hoc Library Planning Committee was never asked to address.
Or the steering committee.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Dinner time yet?
It is.
Well past. I promised Rick we'd be out of here by 1:30.
By 1:30. Promised.
Two at the latest.
I told him I'm asleep at 10, so
So am I correct that we just have three meetings on the board right now?
Well, we're gonna have to
I love, we love the sound of this.
Have more because we're gonna handle
I mean, I think some of this, we're gonna have to, as the process moves along, we're gonna, we're gonna uncover new things that we have to talk about. So I think, I don't think I'd certainly cancel that February 9th meeting. I'd hold it and then we have time, we can formulate the agenda for that at a later time.
Here's a quick thought exercise. Do we want to, and especially based off, and I can't remember her name, what she was talking about, about our ability to present our, our proposal in enough time to actually inform our citizenry? No, it was the other, the other nice lady.
Oh, Betsey Owen, yeah.
Do we want to just quickly address a timeline, working from the June ballot backwards, and, and are we setting ourselves up for success here?
Well, we know that we have to, we have to have the proposal ready by a certain date so that it can go to public hearings and, and be put on the warrant.
And that's X many, how many weeks out?
Oh, jeez, I can't remember.
Six weeks out, six weeks?
We've gotta have a decision by April first.
A decision, you have to have a decision on the dollar amount and location. That, that
We have to have a warrant article ready by
Right.
By the middle of April, late middle of April, right?
I mean, it becomes a, yeah, it becomes a challenge the further you get if you don't have a conceptual plan to show people when you get into the public hearings, but
But basically, you know, we'll be writing off all of May to, to sell this. And, and it may be progressing. I mean, it may have designed surets even after the cost is, is up there.
Well, then you get into the question, well, what are we voting on? Cause aesthetic appearance and materials is high on a lot of people's lists.
I, I get that, but you know, in a sense, we had that the last time around. The, the architects made the, the statement that the exterior was a flexible thing and, and people put it in stone, but what I'm saying is that while we definitely have to you know, do as much as we can, as fast as we can, I think we can be selling it into the timeframe that, you know, after it gets clamped onto a price. And, and the wording of the, of the
The site is selected.
Yeah, well, the site will be selected before that.
Yeah, that's gonna be the big one.
I mean, I'm hoping that the site's selected in, in three weeks.
I don't call on people, man, I'm sorry, Ben. Well
No, go ahead.
Two weeks. Two weeks is the 31st.
That's the three weeks.
Three weeks.
Three weeks.
Yeah.
That's the seventh, that's when we have Jane in. So you think by the end of that week, we'll have the site picked? We'll be able to say
I think the fourteenth we have the site picked.
Okay.
Like, and I think we have enough information by then.
I'm not meeting on the 14th. Guarantee of that.
Valentine's Day.
Yes.
We'll pick your wife. Can we, uh
It's gonna be your Valentine.
Can we hear from Ben for a second?
Oh, no, I mean, I think you're all gonna get there. I was just saying, like, that meeting, the ninth is, is open, and if you could have the site picked by then, that would be awesome.
Or pick it at that
Or pick it at that meeting.
That meeting may be our discussion to
To, to do it, I mean
finalize, and that may be a meeting rather than a workshop where we take votes.
I mean, it looks logically like that you'll have heard from all your experts by then. It looks logically just laid out that that's where the decision will get made.
Right before the toboggans.
And that was just what I was gonna ask, what's gonna happen at that meeting?
Members of Rockport, the select board mysteriously killed in two hours.
Jeez.
Break through the ice. On the hill, if we don't get some cold weather soon.
Yeah, are you racing ringers or
No, we are the ringers, Ben.
They're the ringers.
They're not worried about what they're doing in Camden.
Oh, and this, that's a topic that'll be on our agenda for next Monday and that we will make decisions on, so
The toboggan?
Who's gonna throw themselves down the hill?
Um, last question, and then I'm totally ready to go home. Are we at each of these meetings going to ensure that we have a library person that's not Ben? A, a library committee member? Who's going to be liaising with the other stakeholder groups that were we're not asking necessarily to participate in this process with us, but we want them to be as informed as they can be? Are we going to be inviting a liaison from, I'm, I'm only throwing it out there, I could go either way.
From
Well, I think they're welcome to come.
Just the library committee or
Library committee. I, I kind of left it at just the library committee.
They're, they're public meetings, they can come if they like. If they'd rather watch it at home, they can watch it at home.
Okay.
I'm, I'm on that committee so I can, you know, take a minute back to them.
Perfect.
You didn't mean, are we actually gonna ask them to participate in every meeting?
I, I was.
Is that what you meant?
So there was, there was a person, though it can be Ben, that does watches the chronology, watches us walk down this path and can inform other really applicable stakeholder groups that, no, that's a misconception, they did do that, or whatever.
I wanna be able to do that because that's what part of the PR campaign will be. I mean, you're doing it this specific way in part so that you can pass it. So being able to articulate that out to the stakeholder groups, to the library patrons, to the town, is part of the process. In my opinion, and so me being able to articulate that out to, to a wider audience is important.
Speaking of the meetings coming up, do we have questions or an agenda for these meetings with the programming, capital campaign, and the contractors, architects, and engineers?
Well, you'll see questions here, questions and topics, and I, I would love for you to add to that, you know, send me, send me other concerns that you have that, that fall into those those things. I'll, I'll send this to you electronically so that then you can go and, and add stuff in and sort it and what have you. And then I'll also add, you know, what meetings these things are at.
I mean, there's a citizens' relations on here that I certainly didn't have.
There is a citizens' relations and, and it and some of it, it was, it was kinda that, that place I put stuff when I ran out of places to put stuff. For instance These are the more provocative and somewhat vitriolic statements, and as much as anything, they're on there, not necessarily to be gone over in a meeting, but just to remind us of a tone that we're trying to stay away from.
But I think we need to, I don't think these are gonna work for I mean, yeah, these are concerns we have to keep in mind to be sure, but I think we have to have some idea of what we wanna come out of that meeting, each of these two meetings with, as far as answers to certain questions that we as a board have.
All right, well, let's, let's formulate the big questions. And, and again, this is just a matrix of, of the points and the questions that, that the citizens have had.
It's useful for that, but I think
But you can use me as the single point to, to fire questions at, and I'll put them in the, in that matrix.
Okay.
Everybody has Excel on their computers?
Yep.
Well, the Mac version.
This guy's asleep over there.
Yeah.
Been up for a while.
Earlier, not that much earlier here, we said that we thought we could come up with a budget tonight, or a budget figure.
Now that everybody's gone?
Well, yeah, cause we said we didn't want to include it when we were talking programming and capital campaign. That we should have it done first.
We could start that meeting with that, or we could just go on down the road, the line that's, that we've already started? Which is your preference?
That's what all of our preference, you know, what we all, what we think
I mean, I think at this point
We wanna have an, an idea here that that is what our goal is as we go through the rest of these meetings.
Right.
Cause maybe we have to shift it. You know?
I think at this point, we can do it only very roughly as we did before, and so, and so for me, it's, you know, public contribution of one to 1.5, tasking toward the low end with a project cost of three plus or minus a little bit, depending on the aspirational funding.
Second, I completely agree with what Ken just said.
One to 1.5.
Bias toward the low end on the public.
Public, and then total?
Three.
Three oh.
Or less. With, you know, a cap of three, depending on the aspirational funding, or I forget if I worded it that way or not, but something like that.
That's Ken. So Jeff is gonna hold up the, I'm gonna start out by holding up the high end. I'm gonna say I'd love to say one and three quarters, but I'm gonna say 1.6, matched by 1.6. And
For the capital people?
He's saying 1.6 public, 1.6 trigger.
And, and 1.6 private money, and hope that we get additional aspiration of 500.
You've already put us over where they said
You're at 3.7?
I'm at, yeah, 612, 232.
You're also at 2.1 for the capital campaign, and they thought that two was their plateau.
Well, but we have to have that conversation
With them about
That's what they had all said.
That's what we heard from them before.
That's what we heard from them before.
If we're talking about this aspirational piece, they may have a different opinion about that, so I think we have to be open to having that conversation with them. I don't know, they may come back and say that's not possible, but
I, I'm sorry, we're, we're thaying a lot. Who's the they?
The capital campaign people.
I think it's refined to a conversation when, when Joan sort of pulled the meeting up and said, I wanna be clear, I said we think we can raise 2 million.
Right.
Full stop.
But I got a minute 1.6.
Well, plus the 500.
But the aspirational I see is outside the, outside the purview of the capital campaign.
Really?
Yeah. Sort of, but
Well, I think it's a different way of looking at it. There's a whole different, there's a whole different effort getting strong, and there's a whole different effort getting the picker room. Now
But that is our entire effort.
In the end, you know, there may have been a little bit of robbing Peter to pay Paul. But those really are two different approaches, particularly for, for something that's named.
But I think that that's where we have to talk to those people, and, cause they are the ones who've been out in the community assessing this, so we have to, and, and that's, you can certainly throw that out and see what they say.
But also, but also I look at aspirational as you know, the, the tripping over the golden pot, the pot of gold. I'm not counting on it, it would be nice if we could design something that would bring in that extra money. I'm not counting on it. It would be nice if we could design something that would bring in that extra money, great, but I'm, I'm counting on one six plus one six, which is three two.
Here's what I guess I'm struggling with. If, if someone says, I wanna give two hundred thousand dollars, but I want you to. Name the room for me and we're actually two hundred thousand dollars short from hitting our trigger. And we've kinda run the well dry, then the whole project gets kiboshed because we haven't done a capital campaign portion. Set to actually build the library. If we're doing both simultaneously, you may have money built up in aspirations that could actually trigger the project to go. But it's tied up in naming a room versus actually doing.
If that aspiration is something that gets added on to. You know, so if, if that, if the aspiration wasn't there until that two hundred thousand dollars came.
Are you suggesting then that we put a little addition over here?
Yeah, I'm, I'm suggesting that that's.
For another room?
Right, or the other way of going about it is that you have, you have open space that is, you know, basement space that is designed to be a meeting room. Come time to fund it, that could be an aspirational because it's already there.
The future proofing in my list refers to. Amongst other things, the potential for expansion. That still has to be part of this conversation. And what I think you're saying is one of the things you could do is incorporate some of that potential for expansion right off the bat.
Right.
And then aren't you triggering the complaint that, oh, you're putting in this blank space because you know you're gonna come back and you're gonna sneak it in. And somehow build it all out and we're not gonna have a say.
You may be, but what we're trying to do is reconcile programming that we believe to be responsible and a budget. So we are not introducing irresponsible additional programming.
We're making happen.
We're trying to make the programming that has been identified happen.
And one of the things I, we have to be, in my opinion, a little careful about the aspirational thing, cause one of the things I'd like to think about is. Let's say that we come up with a design that everybody loves and the private funding is going very, very well. And let's say that we, I'll pick Jeff's one point six. Let's say that the private funding target is one point six and all of a sudden it's one point eight, one point nine. What I would like to be able to do is a board in that situation and say, this is great. We're gonna reduce the taxpayer contribution.
So Jeff and I talked about that and I, and I almost wrote that into my model and it just felt complicated. I didn't know how to. I didn't know how to sell it.
Well, I think what we can do is that at some point we can make a pledge to the voters that, you know, once, once we decide on the cost, that here's the cost. And if we're successful in the funding and, and if the funding is more successful than we anticipate, then we would pledge not to increase the project cost. But to turn around and say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna have a lower burden for the taxpayers.
We made that pledge the last time too, and people still came back and said, it's gonna be four million on my tax dollar.
Well, I mean, all we can do is, is, is say what we, what we feel, you know, if people choose not to understand it, that's.
Okay.
So. You asked for numbers.
Yep.
I'll be at one point two, one point seven.
One point two, that's.
One point two public burden, one point seven trigger. And five hundred aspirational.
And you don't wanna break three on that first number cause it's psychological?
Gave you my number.
Good answer.
I'm gonna challenge you on that.
No.
Okay, and Ken, or Owen, did I hear you just say ditto to?
To Ken right off the bat.
Okay.
Oh, really? Cause you were at one five.
I was, that's kind of my high end.
Okay.
Okay.
One, one, five.
Well, I said one to one point five, bias toward the low end for the public and then.
Owen biases to the high.
Total project cost of, of no more than three.
No, 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 I bias to the low end if we can get it to the low end. That would be my high end.
That's helpful, knowing three.
Right, I, I, no matter what you finally end up with, I think it, the conversation is helpful for Ben to figure out.
It's helpful.
I asked Ben before because, cause we, we can't, we can't put down a hard and fast number right now, but.
It's gonna move.
So, so we have Bill's numbers yet?
Yeah, and, and I'm pretty much one point five and one point five. I, I'm leery of this aspirational.
Okay.
And, and how you, I, I'm just having a problem wrapping my head around how it would function or work.
Sure.
That, you know, all of a sudden somebody comes in, well, we've already had the taxpayers approve this amount of bond for this kind, for this building. And all of a sudden we got this other amount, what are we doing? Go plating all the. Door?
I can give you an example if you want.
I, yes, I, I.
I mean, if suddenly there was a bunch of extra money, I would be like, well, maybe we can get a, another small little room tacked on. You know, like the ones that we have, the, the group study rooms.
Yeah.
Then we can use it for a specific thing. I mean, I'm not saying three D printers, cause I don't want a three D printer, but then I could have a space for. Something, I mean, we're looking at VR or I'm, I'm looking at that. I think that would be really a neat thing for the library to go. But then you would have the room to do something like that. It's extra stuff. It's not part of the initial program.
So let's get this right, you don't wanna, you don't want a three D printer, but you do want VR?
I'm gonna skip three, they've got a three D printer in Camden, what do they do with it?
What do they do with it?
They make keychains and they charge people to do it. I mean.
It's pretty demeaning, dude.
I mean, it's not that bad, but like I haven't seen things. I'm sure Amy's doing other things, but there's a cost associated with that. And it's space and it's technology and it's this big thing.
Oh, I do.
There's just other things. I can skip that and go to the next thing.
Technology skip.
We have to be really, really careful with the aspirational piece.
It's extra stuff, yeah.
I mean, I think we have to be really, really careful because if we get extra money, I wanna give some of that back to the taxpayers.
And my only concern with the aspirational portion is, and maybe I've just, maybe my brain's weird, but if you've got, you know, we're, we're, we're falling short of our. Trigger amount, but we've got this big pot of aspirational money just because everyone wants a row named after him. We have to delay, delay when people were willing to give to the library project, just not into the main pot of money.
We'd have to figure that out.
Yeah.
We had, that had, we have to be really careful with that. I mean, I think it has some, some possible merit. But I think we have to be really, really careful that we don't allow it to grow the project and, and to something that the voters don't support.
Well, there were still eleven people watching and so, and, and more people, I don't.
And no comments though?
Oh, yeah, there's comments, yeah.
He's shielding us.
Yeah, shielding you from the comment, but there's also a batch of people watch these things after the fact.
Yeah.
And you may get, you may get feedback on what you're saying now and that may modify or. You'll have the benefit of their feedback.
And if your feedback is positive, Jeff will give you chocolate.
Hopefully I'll run out of chocolate.
Okay, are we done?
So basically, you're, you're, you know, from each, each of us in different.
Yeah, three is helpful. I mean, I know I need to reduce by half or something.
Are, are we done?
We are done. Thank you all very much.
Okay.
Thank you guys for the work.
Holy smokes.